I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Okay, now it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so moving forward to the next aspect of our agenda. It's, I believe Matthew would give us the, what the application is. The first applicant and what exactly they're, you know, they're trying to do here and we'll hear from the applicant. And the and the abutters and so forth. At this point, we'll be opening up to public discussion, or are we going to first describe the, the application?
Well, Adam, I can provide just a brief overview of the application and then, and then I would turn it over to the applicant. I know they have some, some plans and visuals that they would like to present. But just briefly, the application is from a Von Ruhe Development Group. They have requested a special exception for a 76-unit multifamily residential development on property located at 115 Old Homestead Highway. This is pursuant to Section 5, Article B2B of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is a tax map 37 lot 7 and is located in the business district. And with that, I would ask Michael Branley to, Michael, if you're able to promote Tim Sampson, yes, okay. So we have the, the applicant joining us now. And we're not able to hear you right now. No, we still can't hear you.
He, he doesn't have a microphone next to his, next to his name in the participants list. So I don't think he has a microphone turned.
Oh, thanks, Anne.
Hey, Tim. No.
No. So if I could just respond to a question related to something I just said about the development of regional impact notice. So just to clarify, for any, for any application that comes before the zoning board or the planning board, the boards are supposed to make a determination of whether, whether a development could be considered one that would have regional impact in the state. The state sets forth what the criteria are for whether or not that is a development of regional impact. That was something the board was going to take up at the meeting on March 16th. Because that meeting was postponed, we received a request on March 16th on behalf of the applicant to move forward with that, with that legal notice to adjacent communities and Southwest Region Planning Commission. As if, as if the board had determined it was a development of regional impact. So there were not, there were no changes made to the plans that are being proposed between the, the meeting at March 16th and this evening. That was just a request from the applicant to kind of expedite the process of sending out those notices rather than waiting to the board's next meeting on, on April 20th. So, so I hope that, I hope that responds or answers the question that I just received from a resident.
Right. Matthew, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yep.
I can hear you.
It needs to be a little bit louder.
Is this better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Are you ready for me to speak now, Matthew, or?
Adam, are you ready for the applicant's presentation?
Yes, I think barring other discussions or questions, it's what the applicant has to say, what you're, what you'd like to do. So, welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Franks. I'm the President and CEO of Avenue Development Group. With me tonight, we have JP Harris of Sheehan Finney Bass and Green Council and Tim Sampson, Architect of Record. I personally like to thank the board and the town planner, Matthew Bachler and Michael Branley for putting this meeting together as well as everyone else on the board. I know these are very trying times that we're going through. We did try for a meeting in January that was postponed due to the fact we did not have a full board again in February. Then, of course, in March, it was postponed due to COVID-19. So we genuinely appreciate the time and consideration that we're being given this evening. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Avenue Development Group. We're a development company locally here in, in New Hampshire. We're based out of Walpole, New Hampshire. And we build commercial real estate developments as well as real estate developments, particularly affordable housing, which means veterans housing, workforce housing and senior housing. This development is not Section 8. It is, it is an age-restricted senior housing designed for persons 62 and older and is also income restricted. Perspective tenants must have a stable income such as social security, retirement or stable jobs. And what does that mean as far as the income portion of this is concerned? It, it means simply that if you are working or have a stable income and you make between $12 and $23 per hour, which is most everyone in the region, or you make between $25,000 and $45,000 per year, you're, you're more likely than not going to qualify for this. There are multiple senior housing facilities in the region. And so that everyone understands the gravity of the need for affordable housing in this area. Cheshire County has a less than 1% vacancy rate. And currently, there's a waiting list for housing like this that is between two and eight years, believe it or not, eight years. Stone Arch Village on Court Street in Keene has an eight-year waiting list. That's a very long time. It's not only difficult to find adequate housing in general, it is extremely difficult to find affordable housing like this. This proposed development will not solve the crisis our community and state currently faces, but it certainly will help seniors in our region continue to live in the community that they've grown to love. This proposed development consists of 76 units and will be a state-of-the-art facility with community rooms, garden and seating areas inside and out. We designed it so that there are extra wide hallways, up to 15 feet wide areas for people to sit, be able to read, just relax. It's going to be a very friendly facility. And I'd like to also state that it's going to be energy efficient, beyond 2030 standards for that, for that matter. Recently in Walpole, New Hampshire, some of you might not know about, we constructed a 22-unit affordable housing complex. And we did so in around five months using the modular technology that our company has developed. And we did so at a cost $30,000 to $40,000 less per unit than what would be considered standard, saving money. And then we participated in the last few years in a statewide energy audit, a study that was conducted by New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. And out of 100 multifamily buildings that were tested in the state, we have the single most energy-efficient platform development building in the state. That means that we are number one and our energy technology is proving to be beyond our wildest dreams. To put that in layman's terms, our 23,000-square-foot building that has 22 units in it, we heated that building again this winter for under $7,000. So we're doing our part from an engineering standpoint to really bring forth a, a development platform that not only is less expensive to build, it's less harm to the environment. And they're just beautiful, beautiful units. And we'd like to bring that same technology to the Swansea area and have a facility that everybody here could be extremely proud of and happy to have. This development complies with all the appropriate zoning in the area. We comply with the setbacks. It's under the FAA glide slope. It's under the zoning height restrictions. It meets and exceeds drainage needs as evidenced by the civil engineering letter that was written. It's outside of the Shoreland Protection Area. New Hampshire Department of Transportation has examined and provided us a driveway permit. We have ample parking there at the site, 152-plus spots. And I'd like to refer to the Southwest Regional Planning Commission report that stated that on average, 20 to 25% of the seniors won't have cars. What that means is 30 to 40 of the spots that we do have planned won't actually be needed. And we will be working with the best routes in the area to talk about additional transportation for the seniors that are there. And we also had an appraisal done recently that shows that this is not only the least impact of, of the special exceptions, but that this will probably, most likely, like others that have been built in the area, increase the, the surrounding values. So that's really, from a presentation standpoint, all that I have to share with you at this point before I have JP Harris, Attorney from Sheehan Finney, speak. But I, I really appreciate the opportunity to have a voice tonight and share with you this idea of bringing much-needed senior housing to the, to the region. And again, it's, it's, it's very much needed. If you take a look at some of the stuff the Southwest Regional Planning Commission has sent and look at the trends, we, we have to really start thinking our way through this on how we can be better stewards in the environment, do a great job as far as these layouts are concerned and provide people that live with us in these communities that we live in. I live in Walpole. I mean, I think that Keene, Walpole, our whole area here, Cheshire County is one big family. To make certain that we, we do the best job that we possibly can. And that's what we've done with everything that we've built to date and would look forward to bringing a, a beautiful facility to Swansea that is much needed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to JP Harris of Sheehan Finney Bass and Green. And I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is James Harris. I go by JP, so feel free to call me that. I'm from Sheehan Finney.
Could I have that name again, please?
Yes, James Harris.
Thank you.
And I go by JP, so feel free to call me that. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to begin by something that has been discussed briefly already, and that is that this is not a request for a variance, but a request for a special exception. In fact, this project does not, we're not going to be seeking any variances whatsoever for this project. The town ordinance permits this use within the business district if it meets the four criteria. And as we'll discuss in a few moments, this project does meet the four criteria without any variances. We're also, I just want to also clarify, we understand there'll be a further site plan review, so there'll be further steps to this project. But I'm going to give a few opening remarks about some things that are mentioned in your packet to the board members that might not be readily apparent. And then I'll address the four criteria in turn. As has been mentioned, this is a 76-unit multifamily facility. It's actually been reduced in design. From the, the initial design was, was more units than that. We took into account some of the initial public comment, and so we produced the scope of this project. It's also, the size of the project is, of course, dictated by some financial concerns, which I'm going to summarize for you in a moment. But this is affordable housing. It's not subsidized housing. In your packet on page 51 of the PDF version that was sent to you, you'll see some awards and recognitions that this applicant, the developer here, has received with other projects. And Mr. Franks referred to some of that, the energy efficiency and the other recognition for other similar projects. As is mentioned in the packet, this project is financed through a partnership of public and private funds. A portion of the funding comes from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. There are some bright, private bank funds and then some other funds. It has been approved for tax credits. And I want to pause there for one moment. Some folks might have the misperception that a tax credit project means that it's Section 8 housing. This is not Section 8 housing. Mr. Franks touched on that. But what I wanted to highlight for you is the rigorous review that tax credit projects undergo, and this one has already successfully completed. The New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority has strict construction standards. This project under those standards will be required to be of higher quality than typical construction. A market study was also required to examine whether this project will be successful, and the results showed that to be the case. A management company will be required to operate this facility. It'll be run by a professional management company, the Hodges Company of Concord, that is independent from this developer. So from an ongoing maintenance and presentation standpoint, there will be this independent third-party property manager that's required because the New Hampshire Housing Authority requires ongoing standards regarding cleanliness and upkeep. Another requirement for a tax credit project like this and for Housing Authority financing is that there'll have to be tenant rules. So there'll be a, a document that will govern the conduct of those who live in the units. Environmental studies have already been completed to satisfy the results. And there's also, as I mentioned, some traditional bank financing, so those lenders have their own standards. But in short, I wanted to let the board know that this project has already been through a lot of examination and a lot of vetting that touches on the four criteria that you will all be asked to vote on tonight. One last possible misconception is that this applicant is not a not-for-profit. It's a for-profit enterprise, which means that this product will pay real estate taxes. So with that, I'm going to turn to the, the four criteria. I know you're familiar with these. I saw from the minutes of the February meeting that you approved a special exception for a 32-unit multifamily project. So I, I won't dwindle, I won't, and Mr. Basler already described them for you, so I won't dwell on them. I'm going to march through them one at a time. The first is whether the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in this district and is appropriate location for this use. Now, your zoning ordinance has a list of uses that are already permitted in this business district. They include restaurants, educational facilities, hotels, motels, inns, bed and breakfasts, professional offices, banks, funeral homes, nursing homes, commercial operations such as greenhouses, warehousing, function halls and so forth. This project is not unlike a nursing home, one that's already permitted in this district. I guess one difference, sir, if you wanted to contrast it with a nursing home, is that this will actually have less impact on the surrounding community in that you won't have employees coming and going. You won't have food service or linen service or the other services that you would have attended as well as visitors to a nursing home. It's also similar to a hotel that's also permitted in this business district. Now, I understand, and will try to address some of the concerns that the public has raised with respect to this project. But I submit to you that this proposed residential use is more appropriate and less impactful on the surrounding community than other uses already permitted in your business districts. It is more appropriate than a warehouse or a function hall. There will not be an ongoing operation with lots of trucks or, that you might find in a warehouse operation, for example, on the same site. So there's a very favorable comparison between this project and other uses that are already permitted in your business district. I'll talk a little bit now about this, whether this is an appropriate location for this use. And I submit to you that it fits in well with the other uses that are in close proximity. Within walking distance of this site, you'll find a restaurant or diner, a place of worship and a gas station. There's been some discussion about the height of this building. And again, I reiterate that this project meets the zoning requirement, the height requirement, without a variance. And I asked the board to consider if a hotel went on this exact same site, wouldn't you have a very similar-looking structure? This is an age-restricted housing, as has been mentioned already. So there will not be kids living in this facility. It won't have impact on your schools other than the positive impact of additional tax revenue. So with that, I'm going to, at the end, I'm going to discuss in a little more detail some of the specific concerns that have been raised by the public. But I submit to you that this project does in fact satisfy the first criteria, that it compares well to other permitted uses and this is an appropriate location. The second criteria is whether such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious or offensive to the neighborhood. So I'll address first the property value issue. In your packet, on, starting on page 54 of the PDF, you'll find the opinion of David Weaver. He's a real estate appraiser with Appraisals Unlimited. You can read his methodology in more detail, but his conclusion is that this project will not have a negative impact on property values. He lists out for your consideration seven studies. Some of them are meta-analyses, which means they are studies of studies. But he lists out the studies and the conclusions therein. He highlights for you that this is new, quality, highly efficient construction. It's attractive. It will be well-maintained by this independent property management company I discussed. He highlights, as I have, there'll be less impact on the roads because this is age-restricted, meaning there'll be fewer cars, fewer trips than a typical single-family residence. And the, the studies show that folks that live in these communities tend not to travel during peak travel times. His analysis also shows to be less burden on your public sewer system. And he concludes, as I've mentioned, less impact on other permitted uses. He, like the Regional Planning Commission, also identifies that there's a significant need for affordable housing in, in this area. We all know the facts about the aging population. We know that as folks age, they look to downsize. They don't have a lot of options, unfortunately. And they want to stay in their communities. They don't want to have to move. And this project, as Mr. Weaver identifies, is just such an opportunity for your community. I will just note that of all the materials that have been provided in connection with this application, that there's no countering opinion with respect to a negative value. In other words, there's no one else has commissioned a, a report to rebut Mr. Weaver, and his conclusion should stand. The other sub-element to this element of the criteria is whether it will be injurious, obnoxious or offensive. And I submit to you that a, a residential facility like this, it will not omit odors. There won't be other emissions or other environmental aspects that would cause any nuisance to any of the surrounding community. So with that, this, this applicant meets the second criteria. The third criteria is whether there will be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. As has been mentioned, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation has already studied this application, this proposed use, and saw no problems. You'll see in attachment H, beginning on page 72 of your PDF packet, the driveway permit that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation has provided. As we've touched on, there would be less impact under this use than other permitted uses. Less coming and going than a warehouse in the same location, working with multiple shifts, for example. The fire chief was also asked to provide any comment. He provided some comments with respect to the width of the driveways, which has been addressed. You'll find that at attachment G and starting on page 67 of your packet. There was no concern expressed from the fire department, the fire chief, that this would overly tax town resources in that way. There's a similar no comment, no negative comment from the police. You'll find that at page 68 in your packet. And we understand that there are some folks are raising some concerns about aesthetics and rural character or other aspects of this. And we understand, as I've said before, there'll be a separate planning board review and we, we'll go through that process. We will, we'll, we will take that into consideration as that, as the process moves forward. The fourth criteria is whether there's adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This project will be public sewer and public water. The, we understand that Swansea Sewer Commission approval is required. We've been told informally that there's plenty of excess water and sewer capacity for this project. And I can report to the board, there's no intention by this applicant to seek a waiver from any of those regulations. With respect to appropriate facilities and proper operation, I've mentioned already the management company, that there'll be tenant rules, continued oversight by New Hampshire Housing and Finance Authority. These are all things that the town will get from this project that it won't get from other projects. So with that, I think I've touched on the four criteria for your consideration. We've discussed how this project compares favorably to other permitted uses, but I also want to mention that this project compares favorably to other projects to which you have granted a special exception. One comparison that I will draw for you is the Haley Heights project. This project has fewer units than Haley Heights. Haley Heights was 90 units and it was approved. Our, this proposed project has 76 units. Some have raised some question about the height of this project, as I've mentioned, and this project is actually smaller, shorter, I'm sorry, than Haley Heights by a foot and a half. And we are not aware of any problems with respect to the Haley Heights project, that it's caused the town any difficulty, and submit that that's good evidence that this project too will be a success for your community. Now, I'm going to conclude by addressing some of the concerns that came through in the packet. I want to reiterate that this is the, not, this is a further iteration of this project than when it was initially proposed, that some of the initial comments were taken into account, for example, by reducing the size. But there are a few comments that I do want to touch upon briefly in hopes that it'll make things move efficiently tonight. Some have, some of the comments proposed, submitted with respect to this project relate to protecting the rural character of the town. And that's important. We understand that this project will undergo a site plan review. But I emphasize that there's no variance required for this project, that it meets all of the zoning requirements. As Mr. Franks mentioned, it meets setback height and parking requirements. He mentioned briefly that the, the, because of the proximity of the airport, there'll be a separate review by the FAA given its proximity to make sure it satisfies FAA height restrictions. But the preliminary indications from the airport directors is that this will not interfere with flight path. Some have commented that the lot is too small. This is a two-and-a-half-acre lot. A minimum of one acre is required to connect the multifamily to public sewer, so we have about two-and-a-half times more than the minimum required lot size. There's no density maximum, so long as it's connected to public sewer. And I'll point out that the airport is very close to this property. And the airport is certainly unlikely to be developed anytime soon. If you take into account not just the boundaries of this piece of property, but the surrounding area, and think about what development is possible around it, I submit to you that this is actually a less dense application than if you put this product in another part of town. In other words, the fact that the airport and the surrounding area around this product will not be developed means that when you take into account the entire neighborhood and the community, this is less dense than an alternative location. Some have raised concern about the burden on the town's welfare system. And again, I emphasize this is not subsidized housing, but affordable housing. The residents that are going to live in this project are no more likely to be unwell for than anyone else who moves into town. Some have asked about whether there's a place for children to play, and I, I've mentioned already, children will not live in this facility. So they're unlikely to be, unlikely to be children. There might be occasional visitors, of course, but they're not going to be heavy users of this project. I understand from the packet that was submitted that there was a, a petition that was signed by members of the community. And I want to touch on that as I close. The petition itself does not link to any specific element of the four criteria that you're all being asked to vote upon tonight. It provides in that way really no direct evidence on any of those four criteria that I've asked you to consider. There is not a fifth consideration. In other words, it's not a fifth criteria as to whether this town, whether this product is acceptable or unacceptable to what turns out to be about less than 5% of your population. So I submit to you that whether the product is popular or not is not one of the elements for your direct consideration tonight. Your consideration is limited to the four elements we've talked about. I'll close by saying that this applicant has provided for your consideration objective evidence on each of the four criteria for a special exception, that this use is permitted in your business district, and we ask that you vote to approve the special exception. That's all I have for my remarks. Thank you very much for your attention.
I want to ask that, this is Adam Mulhern, that I, I'm given two seconds to bring the lighting in my office up just a notch. I want to ask that, uh, this is Adam Mulhern, that, uh, I, I'm given two seconds to bring the lighting in my, uh, office up just a notch. Before I go blind, uh, we started off in daylight, so just give me two seconds guys here. There we go, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, Brian Rogers here, so the question I have, uh, before you open it up to the public. Is would Mr. Sampson or by proxy? Like to post up on the, uh, video chat. Uh, proposed pictures of the units as they are in the packet for people that may or may not have the packet that, that are on video. Uh, as well as any of the letters that maybe people want to see, I'm not sure, but at least. You know, the, the picture of, uh, the draft.
I think that's very fair, Brian. So.
Give us just a second and I'll share my screen.
And Adam, uh, this is, this is Matthew speaking, um, I just wanted to, I received a couple of comments, questions in the Q and A. Uh, box, um, so, um, attendees understand the, the, um, the board's procedures, um, we. Board hears typically the board hears, hears from the applicant first, the applicant provides a presentation. Uh, and then following that, the board would open up the public hearing, um, and ask for comments from the public. Um, so if, if those participating have questions, comments about some of the things that have been raised. Um, during the presentation by the applicant, um, in the public hearing. Um, they would be able to bring up those questions and the applicant could respond to those, so. Um, just so folks listening and viewing understands. Um, we, we will be opening up the public hearing, we will be hearing, um, any comments you have about what's being presented, it's just. Uh, we have the applicant present first, so, um, I just wanted to respond to some of those questions. I've been receiving.
Thank you, Matt.
And Matthew, uh, this is Brian Rogers again, either Matthew or Adam, Mr. Chairperson, uh, I'm not sure how you would like to address this prior to handing it over to Mr. Sampson. Uh, there is a difference between. What people may or may not like to see in the neighborhood versus as the zoning board, uh, being a judicial body, we're only allowed to. Answer certain questions in the affirmative or the negative and then take a vote on it. Uh, so this is really about legally, can they do it and can't they do it by? You know, answering. The questions that are presented to us and aside from that. We're pretty limited, so I didn't know if you wanted to explain that, just so that everybody had a fair baseline, over.
Yes, Brian, and, and just to reiterate, um, I know, uh, for, for everybody's purposes on the call, I, I promise you that we will. Spend as much time as we can or as available to us. In letting everybody get, uh, whatever questions they have or whatever they'd like to say. Uh, and whatever testimony I'd like to give, we will give an opportunity during the, you know, the opening of the meeting. Uh, on the public side of it, so that, uh, make sure we'll go through every single one, all the questions and answers that have been typed in, as well as anything that anyone like to physically say. Uh, vis a vis a call. Um, and to, uh, and to Brian's, um, uh, what he had mentioned, uh. Um, and we had Matthew discuss the differentiation between a variance and the special exception. As it relates to a special exception, uh, the board is limited in its scope, um, to the questions that we have available to us. Uh, the, uh, the four, four conditions of a, uh, special exception. Uh, of course, one being the exceptional allowed from the ordinance, uh, two is the proposed use similar to one or more. Of the uses already authorized in that district and is an appropriate location, uh, for such use. Will such approval reduce the value of any property within the district or otherwise be injurious, obnoxious? Uh, offensive to the neighborhood. Uh, number three, will there be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? And number four, will adequate and appropriate facilities provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, so we are as a board. Limited to the scope of those questions and that is what we'll be focusing in on. And I make sure, like I said, we'll make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And, uh, have whatever they'd like to say, um, presented in testimony. Um, and as Matthew had stated before, our typical procedure. Um, if we were all in a room together would be that the applicant would go through the presentation. Of the material, what they're proposing and, and part of that is a, um, is, is typically, not always, but typically. Um, you know, images or pictures of what the proposed structure is going to be. Um, Matthew, as, as, uh, has stated before, um, has posted this on the Swansea's town's website. Um, and all the packet that we are looking at is, is also available to the public at large to, to follow along where they can. Um, but, uh, that being said, Brian, is that cover what you were considering?
Uh, yes, it does, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, I just wanted to, I know the point had been made and then remade, I just wanted to reiterate it because there's. Sixty-seven people on this. Uh, and I wanted to make sure people had a level of comfort, but also the understanding that. We don't have the power to say yay or nay to something we like or dislike, this is a legal proceeding. And there are steps that we are allowed to take and steps we're not allowed to take, so you did great, thank you very much, over.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, so in, in keeping with the, um, uh, the, uh, the presentation that the applicant is continuing, there's a visual aspect to this to show some of what they're proposing. Um, and then we will, there'll be any questions that the board has of the applicant. Um, will be asked if any of the board members have any specific questions. And then we will, uh, open up to, uh, a public meeting in public format, so gentlemen. Mr. Franks or Mr. Harris, I don't know who on your side will be, um. Showing the images that you're proposing.
Uh, are you able to see our screen at this point?
Uh, I am, is everybody else on the board able to do so as well, or anyone on the call?
Eric Kelly, oh yes, I can see it.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. And what we're looking at is the, of your, um, proposed building.
So the first, uh, slide that we have that's up is a, this, excuse, uh, excuse me, Jack Franks speaking here from Avenue Development Group. Um, would, would be that of the site plan that was, uh, done by the civil engineer. Which, um, we spent quite a bit of time reworking to get everything, uh, that we needed for the fire department. And from a life safety standpoint, uh, onto the site. Uh, we have, uh, adequate, uh, entrance, uh, via Route thirty-two, uh, at the north side of the project. Uh, on the right, as you see coming in, and there's a one-way directional entrance there. Uh, you can immediately turn left to the parking area in front. We are set back over a hundred feet, so we, uh, certainly meet that setback requirement, we're out of the, uh. Shoreland protection area, so we have adequate parking in the front. We have, uh, some parking, uh, on the north and the center, and then the vast majority of parking. Uh, is, uh, to the west on the left side of the screen as you're viewing it now. Uh, we did confer, like I said, with the, uh, um, local fire department, we have. Um, an exit only on the southern side of the proj- project. And, uh, exit out through to Route thirty-two, so it'll be, uh, one way in, uh, one way out, we do have, uh. Water vaults there, we have the fire hydrants there, we did again confer with the, uh, local fire department to ensure that they had. Three hundred and sixty-degree coverage, uh, around, uh, the facility. There's going to be additional civil engineering work that's going to need to be done. And that will be done, uh, for the planning board, uh, for their site plan review. The area furthest west that you can see is an infiltration, uh, area for storm runoff. Uh, we meet the hundred-year, um. Storm requirements there by quite a bit, in fact, uh, the new hydro keg. Uh, information that was given to us from the civil engineer, uh, suggests that we're well beyond a hundred-year, uh, flood, which is more than adequate for what we have. And that's great because we're really, uh, in essence oversized for what we need. So that's primarily what we have, uh, for, um, the site plan to share with you, at least at this point, we do know that. All the calculations work well, again, there's some additional, um. Uh, area furthest east to the right side that has another infiltration in front of the building, we did confer with New Hampshire Department of Transportation. And they were delighted, uh, quite frankly, that we had an area there that would, uh. Uh, reintroduce the, uh, storm water that would come off of Route thirty-two, as they've had some issues. In the past of all some of the waters puddling there, so, uh, and working, uh, closely with them, we've come up with a storm. Uh, drainage retention area that'll really, really help that area, uh, on Route thirty-two. So maybe we can slip to the next, uh. Can everybody see, uh, the first, uh, layout of the building?
Mr. Sampson is Brian Rogers with a question.
Go ahead.
Can you go back to your previous slide, please?
Sure, sure, I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there were any questions, my apologies.
Thank you, uh. Your means of egress, uh, are strictly off thirty-two, is there anything off the back end of this as well, thank you, over.
At this point, we were unable to negotiate any, um, any, any, uh. Opportunity to exit the facility onto Aviation Way, uh, with the city of Keene, as that's a private, uh, road. Um, you know, we're not ruling out that we might be able to work out, uh, an opportunity to have an additional way out. But currently, right now, we have, uh, one way in, um, and one way out, and, um, it was approved. By New Hampshire Department of Transportation, we'd like, we'd like to see, uh, possibly another way out on Aviation Way, but it's, it's not necessary, the driveway permit that we have. Uh, will suffice, that was granted by the Department of Transportation. Any other questions on the, uh, site plan that we have presented? From any board members? Okay, hearing none, uh, we can move to the, uh, building layout. So there were a whole host of things that we had to, uh, work with here from setbacks on the side, setbacks on the front, the shoreline protection area. Um, to ensure that we had adequate parking, glide slope, it by no means was an easy, uh, project, uh. To come up with a formula and or a plan that would not only work for the site itself. But also from a financing perspective, I don't know, uh, but I think a lot of people don't realize that. Some of these, uh, projects, uh, you know, are very difficult to get funded and to make them work, fortunately for us. Our development costs are considerably lower. Using the modular technology scale platform that we have that allows us to, uh, come in, uh, under the wire, so to speak, and to build a. Really, really great building for, for less, less monies, and that allowed us a little versatility. In our approach to being, uh, able to make, uh, a development project work here. Um, the vast majority of units in this particular, uh, proposed development are singles, those are. Uh, highly coveted, uh, there are a few, uh, six total, uh, two-bedroom units. But this slide shows particularly a few of the, uh. Three D elevations of the particular project and it shows a floor plan. And this is the first floor floor plan where we have entrance ways coming into the building, east and west. And, uh, of course, uh, the, um, northern, uh, most, uh, location, which would be. Um, another entrance way into the lobby where the offices are. Um. There's a very large community room on the first floor that will be for social gatherings, there is some internal discussion about having. Uh, potentially a, uh, hairdressing, uh, salon there, possibly a barber shop. And, um, potentially some other activity-related, uh. Options there for the folks that would be living there. And then on the southernmost, uh, area, which would be the area coming out of the community room, there will be a gazebo. And a, a green area for people to sit and read. As I said earlier in some of the discussions, some of the areas in the hallways are, uh, wide and they provide a great area for couches and for reading areas. Uh, each, um, floor will have its own laundry facilities on both sides that will allow. The tenants to do their laundry and, um, get back to their, uh, their apartment use very easily. We have two different, um, areas where tenants can use elevators to take the elevators up to the. First, second, third and fourth floors. Uh, we anticipate, uh, having a digital security camera system inside and out that will, uh, allow. Um, complete coverage of all of the hallways, the exterior of the building, that'll be monitored on a regular, consistent basis. And we're probably more likely than not going to use some type of a fob system where. A tenant has to flash it in front of the door and record them coming and going. So it'd be a very secure facility for the tenants that will be living there. And again, as JP said earlier, uh, will be managed by a very professional management company. And I just want everybody to know that, uh, what JP spoke of earlier about the construction standards, you have your New Hampshire standards, you have your national standards, and then you have. Uh, affordable housing standards, they are, uh, much more stringent than what would be considered the norm. And that's one of the reasons why the, uh, process costs, uh, more money than it generally does. So you can rest assured that this facility will be state-of-the-art in all aspects, it will be. Built, uh, much more stringently and much more, uh, um, professionally, the result that's going to yield. A, uh, just a tremendous, uh, product that is going to be, um, sturdy and, and, uh. Very energy efficient, so there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes from an engineering standpoint. That is, uh, a real bonus to the, to the, uh, community that these facilities are built in, again. This is senior housing, uh, you know, it's, 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 uh, much needed, but we, we've got. Uh, a very goo- good layout, we feel. For this facility, a community room, uh, an outside area, places for people to, to, uh, sit and read and, uh, just a very, uh. It's going to be a very well-mannered facility. You can hit second and third. So the next, uh, slide is going to show some additional elevations, three D. And it's going to show some of the, um. Units that are two-bedroom in the center and then the one-bedrooms, uh, that'll be on east side. And then we're going to have a few efficiencies, uh, Tim can touch with this, uh, right here with his hand and show you some of the efficiencies. And those would be for, there's only six of them, uh, and those would be for, um, folks who want a smaller, smaller approach, but. These units are right around six hundred and fifty square feet for the one-bedroom, one bathroom, I think four hundred and fifty or eighteen square feet, maybe, uh, somewhere in there, Tim, for the, uh. Um, efficiencies, and I think we're right around. A thousand square feet for the two bedrooms, and again, there'll only be six. Um, again, you know, very, very well, well constructed, um, the. Ceiling, uh, difference between, uh, standard construction and our modular construction. Is really such that you normally have like a two-by-twelve between floors, in this case, we have two, two sets of two-by-twelves that are, that are all insulated. So they're not only, uh, super insulated, you've got double the space between floors. And that, that, that just, uh, results in, in a much quieter facility. So we've really spent an enormous amount of time, uh, thinking this through and engineering this. Uh, so that we have a superior, uh, product, uh, I would go so far as to say, I would think that this would probably be, um. If not the single most energy-efficient building and Swansea, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be at the top. And it's going to be one of the better-built projects in, in this, in the city as well. Uh, we take, uh, what we do very seriously and. Uh, I know in this day and age, it's hard to believe that you can actually produce more with less, and I say produce more. Uh, end result with less, uh, money, but it really can, uh, happen if you think and engineer your way through this. And that's exactly what we've done, we've just engineered a better product. And we've engineered a better system. And we're prepared to, uh, bring that, uh, product and that system to Swansea and, and, and build, uh, just a gorgeous facility that everybody's going to be. Happy with and, and proud of, so with that, um, I don't have any more to add, Tim, do you?
Uh, no, I think Jack summed it up pretty well, uh, here's a couple, uh, little closer-up images of. The proposed exterior, I think they're still discussing. of the proposed exterior. I think there's still discussion as to what some of the siding elements are, but I think that's a little further down the road. But again, it's, it's an efficient building. There are, I think, even what some variation and even what the one bedroom units are. The end units are slightly bigger down in this area here, if you can see the hand. So there is actually a better variation than just every one bedroom unit being identical.
Are there any questions from the board members with regard to discussion of the facility in itself? Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Indeed.
In terms of discussion, is there any questions that any of the board members would have on any of the presentation that we heard? I'd open it up real quick, and from there, we'll open it up to the public hearing.
I'm good. This is Brian.
Bob?
I'm good for now.
Ann? Okay.
Oh, this is Ann. I'm good for now.
All right. So at this point of the meeting, we open up the typically open up the, the meeting to the public testimony. And again, we're going to, please be patient with us. Please be patient with the technology we have at hand. We will make sure that everyone has an opportunity. And what we're going to do is what Matthew had stated before, try to go in some semblance of order based upon raising of your hand, using that function of the Zoom here, or by typing in what you'd like in the Q and A section of the Zoom feature. And then if you're calling by phone, I believe Matthew, that was star nine.
And Adam, if I can, I'm just going to throw these slides up on the screen again. So I'm just going to share the screen. Is everyone able to see that? It says, "Public hearing for the special exception application of Onrue Development Group."
I, I can see it. Yes.
Adam Mulhern.
Yes, we can see it.
So let's see. Just as a reminder, if you are participating online, you would click on the blue hand icon at the bottom of the, bottom of your screen. This will raise your hand so that the host knows that you wish to speak. And we will call on people in the order that they have raised their hands. If you're participating by phone, you can use your keypad and press star nine, and that will also notify us that you wish to speak. When the host unmutes you, you'll, you'll receive a prompt, and you'll need to accept that, accept being unmuted. And at that point, once you're unmuted, please provide your, please provide your name and your address for the recording secretary so we can get that for the minutes. I also mentioned at the beginning, we do have the Q and A box available as well. And we have been asking some questions over the course of the meeting in that Q and A box. If you'd prefer to type in a question using that, that feature, you can type in a question or a comment. We'll, we'll try to kind of go back and forth between those that have raised their hands and those that have typed in questions in that Q and A box. I, I would like us to try to first take any comments or questions from the butters, if we're able to do that. I know that I had seen Mary Werner had her hand raised earlier. I know isn't on butter.
I don't think we've officially opened up the meeting, so we should do that first. And then typically during a meeting like this, the chairman would be pointing at people in the audience to, you know, to be called upon. But for the sake of technology, Matthew's more familiar, already familiar with this, he'll be going through each of these and, and, and basically tagging you to speak. So if there's no other questions of the members, then we're going to open it up to the, the meeting to the public. All right.
All right. You ready for me to allow the first member of the public, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. First, we have Laura and Spencer George. You should now be unmuted. Laura and Spencer George, again, please state your name and address, please. Standby. Laura and Spencer George, can you go ahead, please?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Laura George, and I'm here with my husband Spencer, and my address is 26 Sylvan Way. It borders the airport. If you're not familiar with the house, might help to say that it's Jordy Fife Field's old house. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I reached out to the Hodges Company, who are contracted by Avanru Development to manage their apartment building in Walpole, New Hampshire for them. For companies who is supposed to be providing affordable housing to the elderly, their partners were difficult to reach by phone. The number provided on the website took you to a dial by name directory, which required a last name that was not on the contact page. I was able to get the last name of an, of an employee by dissecting her email address. But obviously, I'm 27 and not an elderly person, so I wouldn't expect a company to make the age jump through such hoops. I posed a scenario to the representative on the phone. I have an elderly grandmother. She's 89 and lives in the Walpole area. She actually lived on Walpole Valley Farms for 20 plus years, so she has strong ties to the area. I asked this representative on the phone, "Who could rent one of the Abenaki Springs apartments in Walpole?" And she told me, "Anybody can rent them. They are a tax credit property. Rents are restricted. It is not subsidized, but we receive a subsidy, and it's not low income housing. It's affordable housing." I said, "Great. I'd like to rent one apartment, please." She said, "For how many people?" I said, "Let's just say three." She said, "The three person maximum is $46,740 for a family of three." I said, "Oh, no, I make too much money for that." She said, "Then you can't rent one of our apartments." So I posed a new question to her. "What if I just wanted to rent an apartment for my grandmother?" She said, "You can't do that for her. She has to qualify." I said, "Well, she's 89 years old, so I'm sure she must." She said, "Well, how much money does she make?" I told her, "Way less than $46,000." She said, "She still might not qualify. How much money does she make?" I said, "She's 89 years old. She's on social security. I think her check is about $1,200 per month." She said, "She does not make enough money." She explained, "We require that our tenants make three times what it costs to rent a unit. So for a one bedroom apartment, you need to make $2,070 per month." I asked, "How many elderly people make that much money per month?" She couldn't answer, so I rephrased, "How do people fit in that very small income bracket?" Section eight housing vouchers. I asked, "So it's low income housing?" "No," she replied, "we don't like to call it that, but it is for a very limited population who qualify." Let's break down this math one more time. If you want to rent a one bedroom apartment, you have to make less than $36,360 a year, but you have to make at least $24,840 per year to be allowed in. So there's a very small range of $11,520 for people to fall in to be able to live in these apartments. So based on that, I would say that for the first thing that everyone's voting on today, on whether or not this fits in with the area and the things we already allow here, this property that we're at, that the applicant is asking to build is not the same as a nursing home according to the property management that they hired and recommended on this call that was going to run this building. This building is not for the age. They said it's the same kind of building that's in Walpole already that they said is for old people. And as you heard, my grandmother is 89 years old, and there's no way for her to get me one of these apartments. I can't rent one for her, and she can't rent one herself because she does not have enough money. How is that affordable housing for the elderly if an 89 year old woman who's lived in this county her entire life can't afford to live there? It's ridiculous. Second, the other thing we were looking at was if it's a nuisance to the surrounding community, and they keep saying, "No, it's not. No, it's not." I live at the airport, and I have, I have to pay a view tax. My taxes are $9,000 per year. And I'm happy to pay that money, but the town can't come in and appraise my, my house three times in one year and say, "Oh, you've got a beautiful view. You've got a beautiful view," and then put a four story apartment building in it. That's not fair to the people who live here and pay taxes. There's someone from out of town from Walpole coming here saying, "Oh, it's no big deal to the residents. He doesn't live here, and he doesn't have to look at that four story apartment building." And that's not fair to the people who already pay taxes here. The third thing we were voting on, the property values. If you go online and look at city data, property values statistically drop 3% for every four section eight vouchers in the neighborhood, which the property management company hired by this development company already confirmed that they relied on in Walpole. So I know that we can't just take opinions into consideration, but I feel like those are four pretty strong facts. They're saying this is for the age. There's proof in Walpole and from their own company that manages their property that it's not for the age. That's just what they're saying to get the place built, and then they're going to rely on section eight vouchers, just like they do in Walpole. It is a nuisance to the surrounding community because I live here, and it'll be my view and my taxes that are affected by this. And as far as property values go, statistically, section eight vouchers do lower property values. So I would ask the zoning board to deny this motion application based on the testimony that I just provided. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, for your testimony. This is Adam Mulhern. Typically, during our meetings at the zoning board of, you know, we typically allow the applicant to address questions, especially if they're asked. I think there was a lot to that testimony, some questions, some, some statements. Would you like to, Mr. Franks, respond?
Sure. We're talking about two different projects here. There are senior housing projects that are age restricted, that are 62 and over. And then there are workforce housing projects that are any age. So the project she's speaking of in Walpole is an any age project. It's 18 and over. This is a 62 and plus over. So there are two different types of developments that we're talking about here. Workforce housing, Walpole, senior housing here in Swansea. There are age, excuse me, there are age restrictions for the senior, and there are income limits for both that are based on area median income for the particular county that you're in. Do you, do we accept section eight vouchers in Walpole? We absolutely do. Could there be a situation where there's a section eight voucher here in Swansea? There could be. We don't regulate those. Those are all regulated by the state. They're handed out by the state of New Hampshire, not us. We can't just put people in there that have them because we can't do that. So for us to discriminate against, discriminate against somebody that has a voucher that qualifies in that income band, we can't do that either. So a 62 year old person comes, they have a voucher, they do qualify in that narrow income band that she spoke of, and they don't have any bad credit references. The management company may or may not rent to them. I, I can't answer that question. But it is regulated by the state of New Hampshire. There's nothing that we can do except look at the application to move forward. Hodges Management Companies, probably you were not able to get through to them based on the fact that there is COVID-19. There's a lot of folks that are working from home. I don't know that to be the case, but we do know that in Walpole, New Hampshire, where we have a facility there, our websites do have all pertinent information, including email addresses, phone numbers for people to call, and they call. So again, this is income based. If you make too little, you can't live there. If you make too much, you can't live there. And let me just explain the reason for this. The, the whole idea of affordable housing is that you have some folks that are working that are in that income band between 12 and $23 that make too much money, that can't live at a section eight. They wouldn't, they wouldn't qualify. But they don't make enough money to pay 16 or $1,800 in rent in Keene for an apartment. I know that some of the apartments going one bedroom or right around $1,000, sometimes a little bit more. I know that some of the city centers are 13, 13, $1,400. So there's a very narrow band of folks that work that make between 12 and $23 that don't make enough for section eight, but they don't make, they make too much for section eight. They don't make enough for a regular apartment. So these are designed specifically for folks that work and they make between 12 and 20, 23, $24 an hour. And what does that mean? Instead of paying $1,600 for a two bedroom apartment in Keene, they're going to be able to qualify and live here in a two bedroom for right around $1,050 with heat included. We don't get a check from the government that subsidizes that. It's not subsidized. It's just that's what the rent is. It's rent restricted and income restricted. Now, one bedroom unit in Keene is going to be $1,011 or $1,200. The, the one bedroom here is probably going to be somewhere around 840 or 850. So there's a, there's a savings there, $200 to $300 per month for, for, for these units that are passed on directly to the tenant. That's why it's called affordable housing. The Regional Planning Commission here in, in, in the area, Southwest Regional Planning Commission, in their report gives some really good data for anybody that's interested in looking that shows just how overwhelming the need is for affordable housing here. So not everyone's going to qualify. It's not going to be for everyone, but there is an area in that middle band that this is specifically designed for. And I always like to say it's not a handout. It's a handout for people that need a good place to live, that's brand new, that's up to code, that has everything there that they need with heat included for, for less money. And, and that $200 to $300 a month is, is important for food, for, for pills, for any type of necessities that they may need. That's why this is designed. It's designed specifically for folks that are somewhat, in most cases, forgotten. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Franks.
Do we want to move on to the next question or comment?
Yes.
Okay, Laura, I'm going to lower your hand. And next we are on to David, can we hear you, David?
Do you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address.
My name is David Void. I live at 95 Old Homestead Highway. So the question I want to propose is, how does the developer answer the concern around nuisance to pedestrians when there are no public sidewalks on Route 32? There are no public sidewalks on Park Street to the gas station that you have referred to. There are no easily pedestrian access ways to any, to, to the pond even. So how is this going to be safe or not a nuisance to the community where people are, who don't have cars, that was referred to by the developer, that many of them will not have vehicles? How will they handle that mode of transportation when there is no safe way to walk up or down Route 32? That's my only question. Also, one additional comment. We, in the interest of time, could the answers to the questions be a little quicker? Because we think we have a lot of people with questions. And so don't talk so much.
All right. Thank you for your question and comment, David. You're back on mute, Mr. Chairman.
Some of the questions there, I think, may be related to the applicant, and some may be related to the city of Swansea. But, Mr. Franks, would you like to answer anything specific to your particular application?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be as quick as possible. The question regarding transportation is one that we hope to discuss with some of the bus routes in the area. Southwest Regional Planning Commission. transportation is one that we hope to discuss with some of the bus routes in the area. Southwest Regional Plan, uh Planning Commission did point out that there are buses that are in the area. We do have uh plans to make those discussions. As far as the sidewalks, I think, and we actually spoke with DOT about that. And we could put a sidewalk out front, but it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere. So DOT was very specific in that if we did build a sidewalk and put a sidewalk in that went to nowhere because no one else had one, that it would then be the city's responsibility, the town of Swansea, from an insurance standpoint and from a maintenance standpoint. So we'd be happy to put in a sidewalk, but it's going to have to be given, given to the city to maintain and to uh have it to hold, so to speak. And it would be a sidewalk to nowhere because we can only uh address the area that's immediately in front. So as far as pedestrians crossing the road, I, I think that's a discussion we could easily have the DOT to put in a safe crosswalk uh for pedestrians that didn't want to travel or walk over to Wilson Pond to sit and watch the geese or watch the ducks. That's something we could certainly do. I don't think at that point we're going to need to put in a, a stoplight, but again, that's a discussion we can have with DOT. So thank you, David, for uh the question. It uh, it's a, it's a good question, but the sidewalk issue has been discussed and debated uh in previous uh zoning board meetings and um it's been confirmed by DOT that it would not be up to us to uh handle it moving forward as far as maintenance was concerned and uh responsibility thereof. So I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. I appreciate that. Mr. Bradley, would you like to uh maybe call the next uh person or butter who would like to uh and ask a question or make a comment?
Absolutely. Just one second. Next up, we have Bruce and Nancy. Please stand by. Bruce and Nancy, can we hear you?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Decotto. I live at one twenty-six Old Homestead Highway, North Swansea.
Can you spell your last name for the record keeper, Bruce, please?
Yes.
D E S C O T E A U X.
Thank you.
My wife Nancy's also here. Um so can I, can I speak now?
Yes.
Please go ahead, Bruce.
Okay. Now, there was just some comments made about how they're not responsible for the uh crosswalks and so on. But they are creating this situation by having all of these people in this large apartment house. There was a lot of other things I wanted to mention, but that, that brings up some other things. We got people walking down the streets and riding bicycles now. There's a lot of traffic on the sides of the roads where there are no crosswalk, where are no sidewalks or bicycle lanes. And this traffic is very heavy at times, plus we have tractor trailers and uh large dump trucks that are going back and forth to, to uh pick up sand down the road. So these people, when they're walking and riding their bikes on the sides of the roads, we have to swerve away from them. Sometimes people are crossing over the lines. It's not uncommon to go around a corner and see a dump truck or something crossing the line to avoid these people. You've got some large trucks and a lot of traffic down here. So I think that's a concern that they're saying it's not their problem and I understand that. I think they're these, this is creating the problem. Also, they talked about how attractive their buildings are. These apartments are a clear view of our homes. I've been living here for forty-two years, paying taxes, and I don't want to have to see this outside of my building, outside of my home. Now that's also think that this will lower the property values because this is not maintaining the character of our neighborhood. The master plan is to retain our rural character. And they're not going to be doing that. And another comment they made about people not driving. This is for people sixty-two years old who can afford these apartments. So I'm thinking they're going to be driving. Many of them are. And you just approved the building of a apartment house up the street, a thirty-two unit. So between the two of them, I think you're going to be getting close to two hundred cars within a mile. That other apartment house and this one are only a mile apart. And I think you're going to have a very large amount of traffic. And right on the corner of Aviation Drive, Aviation Way, Aviation Drive, there's a bus stop. And there's small children that gather there every morning to get on this bus. And now you're adding all of this traffic and all these people in that area. And I think that's going to create a dangerous situation. I'm afraid that you're creating a dangerous traffic condition and the neighborhood is by adding these uh apartments, so. That's all I have to say. So if not, you want to end. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Bruce and Nancy. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, um, I would say to uh Mr. Franks again, um, I, I would, I would imagine that a lot of the uh butters and so forth are going to have similar could have similar uh questions and similar um responses. And uh, I, I think in terms of uh, you know, with respect to being fair to everybody on the, on the call, um, maybe some of the things that came up during this particular uh members of requests. Uh, do you have anything you'd like to respond to on uh, on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would refer the gentleman and his wife to the reports that we have that are uh, that have been submitted. The uh report from Southwest Regional Planning Commission does address the parking uh and uh does address the number of trips and does address uh the uh twenty percent of folks that would be living here that would not have uh vehicles. That's the national average. Um, we could delve deeper into uh those numbers if we, if we did a report here locally, but DOT is uh determined that we, you know, we don't because the number of uh um trips per day would be, would be, would be limited. But I would encourage uh them uh to look at the reports that we have. These, these are unbiased uh reports that are driven by uh the uh information that they derive from uh local traffic reports and from uh the, the region and from the state as a whole. And um, I understand that there are some concerns there uh with regard to the questions that have been uh asked and the um questions that have been raised, but um we're pretty, pretty confident that um the reports that we have addressed those appropriately. And I hope that uh the uh folks that asked the questions and, and raised the concerns will take time to read those reports and uh do the research to understand it clearly.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Um, just a side comment to, to all on, on board. Um, do all the board members, uh, would you agree that uh everything that you've seen so far has been pretty clear? Uh, communication from applicant, the applicant communication from those from the public? Has anyone had any trouble thus far hearing or, or understanding anything that's been, anything that's been said?
Is there a Kelly? Oh, no, no issues. Uh, both parties and actually all parties have been speaking clearly and understandable.
Yep. This is Bob Mitchell. Pleasantly surprised.
This is Brian Rogers. Pleasantly surprised.
And this is Bev Bernard. I do appreciate Michael Branley asking for uh the spellings of names because people speak their names too quickly. And I, and I can't hear them.
I read your mind, at least on one of them. Uh, ready for the next uh member of the public, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Br- How about we, how about we take one more uh, one more attendee and then maybe we can turn to some of the questions we've received in the Q and A box, if that's okay?
You're the boss, Matthew. Just tell me what you guys want me to do.
Well, 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 let's just call it, we'll call on the next person who has their hand raised and then we'll we'll see what we have in the question and answer box.
Yeah, why don't you, while we're maybe going through the next person, maybe take a look and try to summarize some of those in the Q and A, Matthew?
Yeah, yeah.
Next up, we have Anne Heffernan. Uh, Anne, go ahead. Oh, wait.
F F E R.
I would can hear you.
What?
Go ahead, Anne.
It's, don't touch it. My last name is spelled H E F F E R N O N. And I have my husband, James Ward, W A R D, with me, and he has something to say. But before I start, there are a number of us that have very important things to say. And I think it's really fair that you allow everyone the opportunity to speak. It took you an hour to get the meeting going. So it's only fair that you let everyone have their say. I feel very strongly about that. So I'm going to be quick. I just want to reiterate, I walk around the pond frequently. And traffic is a major issue now, especially in the morning. And you cannot tell me that with that many apartments, there's not going to be an issue with travel. And if they're only sixty-two years old when they arrive there, they're going to be working. So they're going to be commuting. So there's that. Um, secondly, in my mind, if you look at a good development, you look at Princeton Properties or something like that. What is that, four, four-point-five acres for the buildings that they have? And you don't even notice them because of the landscaping. This is stark and forgive me, it's not attractive. And finally, just as a point of reference from everything that I've read about the Abenaki development, that started very clearly as a senior or elder, whatever you want to call it. And it changed partway through the, the construction or the development process. So I would just, just throwing that out there. And now I'm going to let my husband, Jay Ward, speak.
I just have a few um sort of nitpicky questions for the developer. Um, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the plans for stormwater mitigation. I know the water is trapped by the catch basins. Where does it go once it's in those basins, especially the one by the road? Um, is it hooked up to the sewer? Where, where, how does it get out of there? That's number one. Number two, I know that um we were told there won't be any children living there, but I know that there are some grandparents in the state who have to take care of young children because uh unfortunately their children are no longer able to take care of them for one reason or another. So are we saying that no children would ever get there? And if so, uh, I don't have to worry. But if we are there, then there needs to be places for them to play. And there needs to be some landscaping around the property. Comparing this to Haley uh is not at a, an apt comparison. There's a lot more landscaping around a building like that. Finally, um, I looked at the uh packet and I think, I may be wrong, this is why I'm asking the question. The fire department wants a driveway width of twenty feet. The north driveway is twenty feet, but the south driveway is sixteen. And I'm wondering why that um that's what I read, that the north driveway is extended to twenty, the south is sixteen, which doesn't seem to be what the fire department wants. They want to be able to put two trucks side by side going through there uh to fight the fire. Um, and lastly, just because we can see this uh from our front door, uh, it, it's, it really is an impact on the community. And you have to understand that walking out your front door and seeing a four-story building in a nice rural community like the uh Wilson Pond area there is um not going to be pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne and Jay. Uh, you'll, you'll be going on mute again and we'll turn it back to the chair.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Branley. Uh, Mr. Franks, there's the, I guess, three or four questions um that were presented. Um, I don't know if you want to go ahead and take each one of them. Uh, first, I guess, was on, on stormwater. Uh, would you like to reiterate on the stormwater? Uh, and uh, I guess where, where the water itself would ultimately go?
Sure. The uh site's unique in that it slopes uh west. The stormwater calculations have been done by the civil engineer, as mentioned earlier. We have uh an oversized area at the west end of the project that will allow the stormwater to gather and infiltrate naturally into the ground. So there will be none that we will be shipping uh into the stormwater uh drains as we know it, unless there's some discussion with DOT out front of the building, whereas they would like to have catch bases there. We don't know the issue of that yet. They're working through some of that now. Figure out from the height perspective whether or not that would work. Uh, from a traffic perspective, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman. If you want to go through, I wrote them down, but.
Well, I mean, it's, it's you to respond. I'm not, what answer or?
Okay.
First.
From a traffic standpoint, uh DOT has already made uh that determination from the standpoint of uh senior housing and the impacts to the area. And have concluded that uh there is no need for a uh study to be done as they ran all their calculations based on national, regional uh and state averages for, for that. As far as the size of the site is concerned, uh, we meet the criteria, one of the four with regard to the sizing, we need one acre. We have two-point-five acres. So we utilize the area that we have uh to fit uh what we need to accomplish there. As far as the kids are concerned, this is regulated by HUD. It's regulated by the state. And uh, there are a list of tenant rules, so there won't be any kids living here other than to visit with their grandparents uh in summer times or over Christmas holidays and breaks. It's all very heavily regulated. No, these aren't rules that we, we come up with. These are rules that the state and the federal government comes up with. Everybody has to abide by them. Landscaping will be handled at the planning board. Uh, there are some ideas that we've been tossing around to meet all our uh planning board requirements. And I do understand uh that there is some concern about that. However, it will be uh planted and seeded appropriately to the planning board's liking. And um with regard to the fire department, we did have this discussion with the fire department. And they needed access on the north side at twenty feet. And on the south side, uh, they were fine with sixteen feet. So that's what we drew to their specifications and they were happy with that. So uh hopefully I've answered all of those questions. Great questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks.
Adam?
Yes, Beverly.
Chairman, I, Mr. Franks, I have a hard time hearing you. I don't know whether it's because you're not close to your microphone or not, but um, I, I want to make sure I get everything into the minute, so please be as loud as you can or speak more slowly or something. I don't know what it is, but I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, can you hear me better now?
It's a little bit better, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll pick this, uh, I'll pick this up and speak. Uh, I'll speak uh a little more clearly uh in my apologies, so that I'll do, I'll try, I'll try to do better.
That, that's much better.
Okay, wonderful.
And thank you very much, Beverly. You have an impossible task of recording all these minutes and all the discussions that happen back and forth. And we appreciate all your efforts. And we'll do the best. Slow down.
And uh, Adam, if I may, this is Matthew jumping in. Um, I received a comment from uh David Hickling, who is the airport director for the Keene Dillon Hopkins Airport um in the chat box um stating that contrary to the developer's comments, uh, the airport did not state that we would or, excuse me, that we didn't believe that there would be any problem with the FAA review. Um, so the developer still needs to complete an FAA Form seven four six zero notice of proposed construction and receive approval from the FAA prior to construction. So that is a review that needs to be completed um and approved by the FAA. It's not something that's done by uh the airport itself. So um, if, I know David, uh, David is on the call. Um if, if I'm misrepresenting that, David, if you want to raise your hand, um, we can call on you to clarify that, but I just saw that in the chat box and wanted to um include that for the record. And I see David just raised his hand.
I'm sorry, could I hear David's last name, please?
It's a H I C K L I N G.
Thank you.
So you would like me to call on David now, is that correct?
Just to clarify that, um.
I think that that would be acceptable, Mr. Bradley. Bradley, if you would uh be so kind.
All right, uh, this is David. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, David. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, uh, Matthew, you stated that pretty clear. So um, the developer, I guess, the attorney had stated that the airport uh had made the, or intended that we didn't think there'd be any problem with the FAA approval. Uh, I think the way I address that is the airport didn't have a problem with the development, but um we can't really speak for the FAA's approval process. So I just want to make sure that if this moved on to an approval process tonight, that it was mentioned in the minutes or that it was taken into consideration that they still did need to get that approval from the FAA through filing that uh seventy-four sixty. So that, that, that's all I want to state.
Thank you, David.
And Matthew, uh, if I would uh ask here, uh, with FAA approval, is that some that the board, the ZBA board would be required to um have authorized prior? Or is that something that would happen during planning or some other component of this?
Well, I think it would be appropriate for the board to require that if, if the board were to approve the project, uh, to require that as a condition of approval. Um, it's often the case that we have different levels of government needing to approve a project. Um, and we can't, um, we can't condition. I guess we can't, we can't say to the applicant, you need to get FAA approval before we, as the zoning board, approve it. But you can say we're approving this on the condition that you get the FAA approval. And if you don't get that approval, you're not able to do the project, if that makes sense.
I think I have that. Okay.
Yeah, this is uh-
Yeah, this is Brian Rogers, so I have a statement on that. So if you look in the packet, the interim airport director before David came on board, I believe David was in transit to our area. Mark Goodrich had put that in writing, but this still needs to be uh reviewed, and the FAA uh needs to sign off on the 7460 prior to construction. That's in the packet. Attachment one.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, just of clarification for the minute, would you repeat the form? Is it a form permit? What is the 746 referred to?
It's an FAA Form 7460. It's actually a permitting by the FAA to do construction in the flight path or the you know, in the zoning of the district that's under the jurisdiction of the FAA. Uh, David, if I mistake misstated that, please correct me.
It's it's so it's Form 7460. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. It's an FAA Form 7460.
Got it. Thank you.
David, I just unmuted you in case you want to clarify anything there.
Uh, no, that is correct. It's FAA Form 7460. It's called the Notice of Proposed Construction. So yeah, if that's in the if that's in the documents, that's all I think you need to do is as long as it's clear that that has to be approved before construction starts.
Okay, noted. I think in terms of when this gets to the point of decision making, um, then we have to take that in consideration, uh, you know, during our process.
Well, one other, Adam, if I can, this is Matthew. One other comment I wanted to make. There was uh, I believe a question or a comment um just about this development being age restricted. Um, and any kind of guarantee that it would it would continue to be age restricted, and I do believe with granting a special exception for the projects, I do believe the board would be able to to make that as a condition of approval, that it is age restricted.
Okay, Matthew, thank you very much. So both both the FAA regulation as well as as well as the uh being a age restricted property or age restricted project. So those are two things that we will have to note during our discussions amongst the members of the board um during deliberation. But I think in terms of making sure that we hear public comment, I think we were going to decide to go back and forth between the Q and A as well as the phone calls. So that Matthew, where do you where do you see us going next here?
Yeah, thank you, Adam. Um, so I think if I can, I'd like to jump over to the uh, the Q and A box here. First, I want to ask if um if members of the board are able to see those questions and answers, that question and answer box. It's you should be able to see it. Yeah, there's a
Yeah, we can see.
Icon. Okay, so you'll see.
And for members of the public who are not seeing this, they're time stamped, so each question is is presented in a in a blog format, and and each of them is timestamped. So we'll try to be cognizant of those who had answered questions or asked questions first so that everyone has an opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so over the over the course of the meeting, I've been trying to answer some of these questions that are more procedural related uh and not related to this application itself. So uh, you'll see there are 22 answered questions. These had to do with um whether or not public comment would be taken during the uh decision to proceed. Um, there were some questions about how the meeting was noticed. Um, and I appreciate the recommendations made by residents on how to improve um the noticing for these types of meetings. Um, there were some questions about um certain materials in the applicant where application where those could be found in the packet. Um, a question on the regional impact notice, and then also some questions just on public hearing procedures. So um, I've been trying to answer those uh over the course of the meeting. And we do have eight open questions. Um, and so I can turn to those now. Uh, the first question um is where is the? This is from.
Matthew, this is Brian. Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, go ahead.
I think one of the questionnaires uh raised a good point. You know, the hour is getting long here in the tooth. So rather than you ask, you know, reading a question and then going to the chairperson, the chairperson going to Jack, and Jack going to the chair. Can we assume that if you're asking a question that is directed to the applicant that they just have carte blanche permission to answer for procedural? Thank you.
I think in the terms of trying to meet, because again, 10 o'clock, uh, our board is supposed to adjourn unless the members of the board uh see to choose otherwise. Uh, so being at 9:34, and we want to make sure we get it to everybody, I think, from a a functional point of view, Brian, I think that makes some level of sense there.
Okay. Uh, well, I'll just start to to read through these. And we'll go from there. Um, the first question is where is the green space and outside sitting area for the potential of 152 people not counting their guests?
That to me directly, uh, there's a area on the south side of the building that will be a green area. The vast and it'll be an area inside. It's 1100 or 1200 square feet of uh conditioned space. I don't expect 152 people to all be gathering out on the lawn at once. I I suppose that could happen, but it's highly unlikely, but we do have an 1100, almost 1200 square foot uh community room area that uh will be used by the by the tenants that are there.
And Jack, this is Matthew. I don't know if I just stopped um share screen function on my computer. I don't know if you're able to have Tim uh share a copy of the site plan again. Just kind of point out some of those green space areas.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This whole area right here. Here we go. We near all the around here. That whole area that he's talking is all green area. Those tanks are underground. We have one transformer. So that's the green area that we have available, and there's green area out front here uh where his hands are now. There's additional green space out front of the building uh and uh that will be um landscaped, which is here, right in here, right in here. It'll all be landscaped in this area here. So along the sides of both drives will all be landscaped as well, which is right here. Both sides. The community room, as you can see here, is uh is roughly 11 1100 square feet of community room. That'll be used by the tenants for various activities. Hopefully that answers the question.
Was ever in the board be able to see what he was referring to? Yes. Okay. Thank you. So I guess, Matthew, the next question.
Yep. Uh, the next, uh, well, the next one is a comment. Um, just related to the the presentation, not um not relating to the the special exception criteria. So I'm gonna um move on to the next one. The question is, a fire breaks out in the hall near the elevator. How do apartments get out from the fourth floor opposite end of the hall? Um, where are the fire escapes?
You yourself? Yep.
This is Tim Sampson, the architect. Uh, so there's act, there's means of egress that meet all building code. The uh the windows we use are egress windows, so they can be taken out that way. There is uh an egress stairway on each wing of the building. Uh, travel distances are all shorter than code requirements. Uh, we actually went through quite a few iterations to make all of that work uh by both the IBC 2015 as well as the NFPA codes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response. Are you able to, Beverly, are you able to record who is asking these questions? And Matthew, I mean, I see.
Yes, I I can see the question and answer dialogue box.
Okay, just want to make sure that we were taking into consideration.
I think all right, go ahead.
I think just making sure that we, I know people also are on the call directly that would like to speak as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe back and forth a couple more, and then go back to the people would like to actually speak as well.
That sounds like a good plan.
Let's do it for him.
Yeah.
Via the Q and A.
Okay. Um, can you make a can you make a 3D version showing all of the parking and blacktop area around the building? The models you show seems seem to look seems like a lot of open space. Plan view shows zero open space, only building driveway and parking lot. So I think if we can go back to the um the site plan again.
So I think the question being posed.
I think it's Yeah, I think it would be helpful to identify the the building footprint and then the parking lot area um as it relates to. I know the applicant just showed the the open space area on the south side of the building um showing the parking lot and the building footprint on that site plan.
Uh, I think they're asking for more detail. This is Jack Franks, Avenue Development. I think they're asking for more detail, but that generally is a component of the site plan review uh and what the planning board will require. Um, we gave, um, I think, a fairly good understanding of where the parking spaces are going to be and where the building's going to sit and the distances that were required for this special exception. But um getting into the details of the site plan review would be something that would certainly happen later. I'm not certain if we'll have 3D imaging, but it will be um significant compared to what we have here now. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Okay, in terms of, I think the next question can be asked um on this, I think it relates to also people who are going to be on the phone as well. Um, Matthew, I mean, in terms of, I'll just ask the question. Some of us are two people per household and may both wish to speak. Again, this is uncharted territory as it relates to these types of meetings and how they relate to a board setting like this. Um, I think it makes sense in a logical sense, if there are two people in the household who are waiting to ask a question, they can do so. Um, I've seen no problem with that. If anyone on the board does any issue with that. No. Okay.
A lot of mask is that when they get unmuted initially, that they state that there's going to be, you know, two people speaking and just let them both go. So I don't, you know, re mute them before they've both had a chance to speak.
Understood. So that being said, Mr. Bradley, would you like to call the next person in the list of people like to speak?
Absolutely. So next up, we have Sheila. Please go ahead, Sheila. State your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Sheila Heffernan, H E F F E R N O N. I'm here with my husband, Bill Hatton Dorf, H A T T E N D O R F. We live at Seven Pitcher Point in Swansea. So we bought this property. Um, and I'd like to speak to the the second question in the in terms of the criteria, and I will be reiterating things that have been heard, but I feel fair in doing that because I feel like the answers that we are getting are the same rhetoric over and over again, and so I'm not quite sure that the real issue is being heard here. The sheer size of this project will absolutely change the nature of our neighborhood. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I disagree with you quite vehemently that this is a beautiful or a gorgeous unit. It the four-story building will stick out like a sore thumb next to the structures in the area. It will be a large, unattractive structure with a lack of green space around it due to the need for huge square footage to provide more than 150 parking spaces. The proximity of the proposed building to the existing dwellings of the smaller structures will reduce the attractiveness and therefore the value of said existing structures and dwellings. In addition, we believe that the proposed apartment unit will be detrimental to the aesthetics of the neighborhood inasmuch as the area is currently composed almost exclusively of single-family units. The proposal would introduce a completely character-changing element. I understand I am being iterative here, but I'm trying to make sure that we are heard because we are the people who will be living and walking in this area. We it will likely cause downward pressure on current home prices in the entire neighborhood. I don't believe the studies that were done in other places that say this will not happen. We also have additional concerns about how it will impact Wilson Pond, which has not yet been brought up. Pond traffic through the public beach and boat launch is already quite high. We believe that this will increase it substantially. Trash at the boat launch is a problem that is not currently being dealt with, and this will be increased as well. Noise pollution will increase with the higher population density, and the pollution of the lake itself will increase. Wilson Pond Community on its own as a group regulates and pays for the testing of the water and the checks for this that we do with the state. Additional use of the accessory will most likely create pollution, and we're not sure we're prepared to take on that additional financial burden. And I would just like to say on in regarding traffic and the walking, since I am also a walker, my husband and I in that area, that you have cited a traffic report that is pure speculation. They did not do a study. There has not been somebody there watching what is happening with traffic in the area. And as somebody who is 62 years old and will be continuing to work for some time, I believe that there will be much more traffic with the people at that age, and that we cannot assume that it's like another sort of area that's happened. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Did your husband have comments he would like to make as well, or was it just?
No, I'm good. Thank you. I feel the same way.
Can we get your last name again, please, sir?
Yes, Hatton Dorf, H A T T E N D O R F. Also of Seven Pitcher Point, which used to be Hoping Point.
Thank you both very much for your comments. We'll uh turn it to the applicant for his response or comments.
Sure. Thank you very much for the questions and the comments. Uh, we obviously disagree uh with regard to the look of the building. You know, comparatively speaking, when looking at some of the hangers that are just next door that are uh 1950s era that uh are in rough shape compared, you know, compared to what we're going to be putting up. It's going to be a brand new facility. It's going to be modern. It's going to look great. Uh, we do. We do. We do disagree with you on that, but you know, everyone is entitled to their opinion. Um, you know, a hotel is a permitted use in that area. Um, and this will look similar to a new, you know, hotel, whether that, uh, you know, is a Comfort Inn or Hilton Gardens, something along those lines. It's it's going to be tastefully done. It's, I think, uh, we've done a really good job. Of course, we're going to take direction from uh the planning uh board as well. And with regard to the traffic, which keeps coming up, this is a state highway. Uh, New Hampshire Department of Transportation has uh already weighed in on this. And despite what everyone else, uh, you know, has for concerns, they feel very comfortable about this, and it is a state highway that does run through Swansea. And I and I know that they've looked at this very carefully. So we have done um all that we can do at this point with regard to addressing the traffic concerns, and hopefully um that, uh, you know, will uh be be the case moving forward. And if uh there are any other questions, I guess, about that, I can't say too much more to it. DOT has looked at this. They've weighed in on it. They've given us a driveway permit. And senior housing uh does not generate the kind of trips that are being spoken of here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franks. Thank you very much, Mr. Franks. In terms of Matthew, this is maybe somewhat procedural, and I just want to make sure I bring it up. A question was risen as part of that, the last testimony on the quality of the, the water in the lake, the pond, and how this may affect that. Being that this property is not located on the actual pond as part of that. I know in past, our board has made determinations on, on other variances and, and exceptions and so forth, but that was taken into consideration. You know, in the second aspect of our, of our questions, there is, you know, a portion where it says the offensive to the neighborhood, which in this case is considered the pond. I'm just curious as to the consideration we would take as a board on that. You have anything to weigh in?
Thanks, Adam. That's a good, a good question. The, where the building is proposed to be constructed is just outside of the Shoreland Protection District, which is a 250-foot setback from Wilson Pond. You know, as part of the, the site plan review application process, you know, there've been a number of questions about drainage. That is something that the planning board takes up in the site plan review application process. We do have a requirement that, for this type of project, that the additional runoff that's created by the development and the impervious surface on the site, that needs to be managed and controlled on site. So I think the planning board with the drainage study and analysis that will be need to, need to be done for the site plan review application, that's certainly something that they would consider. Hey, I know it's not, not a really complete answer to your question. But.
Since we're fortunate enough to have attorney Courtney on the meeting, does he have anything to add about thoughts of water quality of a semi-adjacent pond is relevant to zoning board's hearing of this case?
Sure. Let me, let me unmute that. It's outside the Shoreland Protection District, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And when I look at the, when the board looks at the four special criteria, I'm not sure that's really relevant. If it's not affecting the pond, I mean, I don't, again, it's a factual question. If, if they want the applicant to provide more information, we can do that. Or butters and neighbors can certainly testify to that more. But on the record right now, I don't think it's, you know, that big of an issue or it hasn't been developed. But we can certainly get into that if there's more evidence.
I think Mr. Franks has a response that he'd like to, to submit.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to just state to the board and to the folks listening that this property slopes east to west. There's, there's, there's no water that's going to run off in that direction. Everything that we have done from an engineering standpoint slopes all west. So there's no water that's going to run there. One of the concerns that the, the DOT had was that the water pooling up on the side of Route 32. And as I stated earlier, we're working to address that with them from a runoff standpoint. So there is some water that does pool up. I know that the folks at Jehovah's Witness have had that happen several times. So we're going to address that. And this, and the state was actually very happy about that. So we're actually going to work with them to mitigate issues that are currently existing. And we expect to have that engineered correctly so that any waters that are pooled up on that side between our property and the state's right of way. And Jehovah's Witness will be addressed appropriately, but it will all run west. So there will be nothing running over the road because the road is crowned. And it will all be running from our, our edge of the property all the way towards the airport and Delwood at the retention basin that is oversized already. So we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, this is Brian Rogers. I, I just wanted to interject here. I think we kind of missed the point that the caller was asking, unless I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. I think she was really referring to not really water runoff. But if you have 10 people visiting a pond, you're going to have, you know, refuse from 10 people. If you have, if you add another 150 people, then now you've got another additional 150 people that are potentially going to, you know, leave refuse on a pond. And I, I think it's a fair question. But as, as we've all kind of noted, it is outside the shoreline protection area. And is, is that something that would be a potential nuisance? Maybe that's something we'll have to consider. So I just wanted to interject that over.
And Bob.
Yes, Adam. Bob Mitchell here. We're closing in on 10 o'clock. And I think we have to make a procedural decision as to whether we continue beyond 10 o'clock tonight. And you know, we're five minutes away or so. Would you, should we address that now?
Bob, I think that's probably a good idea. And I think one question I would have is that how many others would like to, to, to talk about or to, to, you know, submit testimony? And then from there, how much discussion amongst the board it would take for us to, you know, to come to some sort of conclusion or decision here? So that being said, does other members of the board have a feeling as to whether or not we continue this meeting to the, an additional meeting to finish up on questions so that everyone has the opportunity to get the full, their full participation? Or would you consider wanting to continue? Is any questions or responses or?
Yeah, so this is Brian again. So I don't have an issue with continuing the meeting to 10:30 is a hard stop. I think people have had their hands up and had questions out there for a long time. And they have the right and to be heard. And I think we have the duty to hear them out tonight, frankly. However, I would compose 10:30 as a hard stop. But I would also ask that we get rid of the dead air in between question and answer. They ask a question, we give an answer, we move on to try to expedite this process a little bit more than we have done. That would be my proposal.
And?
Yeah, I, I think 10:30 would be fine. I want to make sure, sure that everyone who wants to speak has that opportunity. I don't know that we're going to, we're not going to be discussing and making a final decision tonight, I'm sure. So I think as far as hearing people talk, we should definitely go at least till 10:30.
All right, Bob and Eric.
I can live with that.
And Adam, if I can, I have a procedural question. This is a question that's been raised in the, the Q and A box, which is part of notifying the public about this meeting. We put together guidance for public participation in the meeting. And I did let folks know that if they were unable to attend the meeting, they could provide written comments to me by 3:00 PM this afternoon. And that I would read those comments out loud at the public hearing. I know some residents have provided me with comments and I've been able to participate in the hearing, but not, not everyone who has provided comments has been able to participate. So the question I have for the board is, in addition to the open questions we have in the Q and A box, and I see right now we have four attendees with their hands raised. And then I probably have half a dozen other comments to read into the record. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, just in terms of timing for the meeting.
This is Brian. So I make a proposal that, I make a motion that we continue to 10:30. We reevaluate at 10:30, but we certainly continue. I think we owe it to the taxpayers. I think we told them that they'd be heard, and some of them have yet to be heard, and they have the right to be. So I make a motion, we continue.
Well, second.
Second that motion, Eric Calio here.
So it's been seconded. And would you like to call, roll call, Beverly, please?
A second, I'll get it. Ann Karasinski?
Ann Karasinski, yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Edel Mohren?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion passes to continue to 10:30.
All right, let's move on ahead. And I don't think, at this point, I could be wrong, where people have had an opportunity to speak quiet. Let's continue with the, with the people who have raised their hand and want to speak.
All right. And in response to Brian's urging, I'll try to move it along quicker. So first, next up, we have Jolie Fanning. So Jolie, you should be unmuted. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it's Jolie Fanning, F A N N I N G, at Two Pitcher Point. The point that I want to get on record is the data in the packet from Avenue is outdated and not relevant to the proposal. When you look at the page that has the second consideration, it talks about a study for Greater Boston. It talks about a study for the Richmond region, which I'm assuming is Virginia. It talks about a study for Portland, Oregon. It talks about Section 8 housing, which they've stated this is not Section 8 housing. It talks about group homes, which is not. It quotes something about having public parks as part of the development or a part of the area. We don't have that. It's also very out of date. One of them dates back to 1984, and the most recent one is 15 years old. So my proposal to the board is that we don't take this data into consideration because I think JP, if that was his name, stated that we didn't hire somebody to locally to look into this. Well, if I'm reading this correctly, they didn't either. They took some data that's very old and tried to apply it to something in the, I know we don't like the terminology, but in rural Swansea. So that's, that's one thing. And then when I look at, and I'm not sure why it's in here, the sixth and final consideration for alternate uses. I don't know that any of that is really relative to this project either because they're not proposing any of these alternate uses. What's on the proposal is this apartment building that we are speaking about. So I think the data is not useful, and therefore I don't think the board should consider it. And I do have one other point that I want to make. Mr. Franks had talked about it being one big family and that we really need this development for the region. My understanding from residents in Walpole who contacted us when they heard that this was a proposal for Swansea was that the original zoning board was approached about an over 62 elderly housing development. But then once the zoning board said yes, my understanding from the article I read was that Mr. Franks came back and said, wait a minute, I, I don't have enough people in Walpole to fill this. And now it, as the first person on the, on the line stated, is not senior housing anymore. It's family. So if there was so much need in our region, even discounting that Swansea doesn't have an overwhelming need for elderly housing, why did that not stay elderly housing and fill this need in the region as was the original proposal? Last point I have to make is the many years of waiting to get into a facility like this. I have four examples of friends and family that were in this type of elderly housing in a few months. My mother, my childhood friend, a friend of my parents, and a longtime friend who just moved back to the area. None of their situations were dire, and they were accommodated with the current rate of housing available. So I, I'm wondering why this is such an urgent need if the development that was just built in Walpole was decided after the fact it wasn't needed for over 62. So that's it.
Thank you, Jolie. Mr. Franks, your responses?
Hi, everyone. This is JP Harris again. I'm, I'm going to address the first couple of those questions with respect to Mr. Weaver's report. I'll point out that he surveyed seven studies in his report. And the, the question he was addressing at the time was whether this project would have any negative impact on property values. And that's why he cited to these. The national data, I think, actually bolsters his opinion. It shows that across the country in various similar settings, there was not a negative impact on property values. And I would suggest that the analysis summarized here anyway does not indicate any variables that would have changed over time such that these results are, are no longer valid. I'll just say, however, that his report was intended specifically for this project. And so he cites to these studies to bolster his conclusion, but he performs an analysis for this specific project. With respect to the sixth consideration in his report, I think he's making a point there that was similar to the one that I tried to convey. And that is he's listed out the uses that are already permitted in this district that for which you'd need no special exception. And he's essentially trying to draw the same comparison that, that we were trying to draw between this proposed product and a nursing home or a hotel or the other uses that are already permitted.
Great. I can speak to the project in Walpole. The original project that we had gotten approved there was 55 and over condominiums, which are not apartments. When we started to pre-sell the condominiums, we were inundated with calls from folks who wanted to rent, not own. So we got approvals for 48, 55 and over condominiums that were for sale. At that point, we reassessed where we were in the project. We went back to the planning board to let them know that we were planning on doing apartments instead. So at that point, that's where the decision was made. It was back to the planning board. It was re-approved at the planning board. We never had to go in front of the zoning board for anything. So to answer your question there. And it was determined through market studies that the best use of that property at the time and for the foreseeable future was for a family development. And that's what we built based on market conditions. So we built what the area needed based on market studies that were heavily imposed and sanctioned by the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. That's exactly what we did. So with regard to the need, I would encourage everyone listening that's got questions about this to go to New Hampshire Housing's website, nipa and HHFA.org to discuss and look at the studies that they've commissioned across the state that have gotten us to a less than 1% vacancy rate. Currently, right now, our estimates are that there are somewhere between 400 and 500 seniors that are on waiting lists attempting to get into these senior housing facilities. I'm in this business. This is what we do. And those numbers are real. So the minimum is two years to get in. If you were able to get in sooner than that, that's fantastic. But I've checked every facility in the region and up to an eight-year waiting list at Stone Arx Village on Court Street now. That's one of the newer facilities that we have in our region. So I, I don't agree with your assessment. And I think I leave the data that I use that are, that are done by professionals that are in this business, and that's what we use because they will not finance the project if, in fact, the project will not support it. So the work that we've done today would strongly suggest that a project of this size and scope will easily be absorbed into, into the market. And I would strongly suggest that we'll probably, if given an opportunity to move forward, probably be close to filled prior to even opening the doors. And Walpole, 22 units we just built, 17 of them were spoken for before we even had our certificate of occupancy. We were filled there immediately, and we have a waiting list on both of the facilities that are family. But the vast majority of folks that live there, I'd say probably 60%, are seniors. So there's an overwhelming need. It's less than 1% vacancy rate in Cheshire County and across the state right now. Thank you.
Adam, Jolie has asked in the comments to get another opportunity to discuss that. I don't know if you want to open it up to a back and forth, or if you want to try to get through the people that have raised their hands and then go back to that if we have time. I'll leave that up to you.
I think just in fairness to everybody who's been waiting to ask a question. I think just in fairness to everybody who's been waiting to ask a question, I think it makes sense to allow the next person to ask a question, and we'll try to get back to everybody with respect to whatever questions or comments they would like to make.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jeanette Groom. Jeanette, go ahead.
Okay, am I being heard?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Jeanette Groom. My address is Six Pitcher Point. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the master plan, which is a town document that has not been mentioned yet, and it does have to do with the rural character. I had supplied Matthew with a document that I sent to him this morning. So as far as documenting everything I say, I think you have a copy of it, as far as the secretary is concerned. That will make your life a little easier. So just looking at the master plan, I know that I hadn't really read it at all, and so it was fascinating to read. It has lots of information. A master plan is defined, is a process by which a community charts its future. So I've documented some of the things that popped out at me in relationship to this particular applicant. So I'll just read through some of them very quickly. On page three, "Among the highest priorities of the Swansea Master Plan Subcommittee is to accommodate change and growth in Swansea while preserving the rural character of the town." So then, "The definition of rural character, a portion of it, 'that which is most natural to the primary human senses of sight, sound, and smell, to the eye, a viewshed of ridge lines, horizon lines, open fields, forests, uncompromised night sky, undeveloped lakesides and riverbanks.' And these will indicate rural society as contrasted with suburban, urban, and generally developed society." "Land use. It is the goal of the Town of Swansea to develop and preserve," and I want to emphasize, "a pleasant, attractive, healthy, safe, affordable, and convenient environment for living, working, shopping, and recreation." Next, talking about housing. "It is Swansea's goal to provide for a full range of safe and adequate housing to meet the needs of all Swansea residents of all ages and income levels, and," I want to emphasize, "to contribute our fair share to regional needs." And just a note to that, Matthew has something in relationship to the housing, to our fair share, that he will be reading later. "Land use. Provide for a variety of land uses through careful management and guidance of new development, which," and I emphasize, "should not detract from the rural residential scenic and agricultural character of the town." Now, this next excerpt is particularly interesting. Its recommendations for future land use. "Continue to direct low-density residential development to occur along the town's Class 5 roads, and," I emphasize, "discourage new residential development in the existing commercial, industrial, and business zoning districts." So that's stated in the master plan. Next, on page eight, "Determine the best way to maintain the proper balance," and that's the key word here, "the proper balance between the residential area surrounding Wilson Pond and the nearby industrial uses and the airport." Let's see. Page 31, "Recognizing the inherent differences between the built and the natural environment. Establish regulations and guidelines to ensure," and I emphasize, "that housing development will occur with as little negative physical and aesthetic impact on the environment as possible." So just the mere visual of a four-story building or buildings, three buildings, in this small plot of land, there is nothing around here that's more than two stories high. Nothing. Except for what they commented on, the Colonial Village and the Haley's Heights. Those are set back. There are much larger plots of land. You don't even see them. This is just going to be right out in front, and you can't, you can't deny it. Four stories do not belong in this neighborhood. Now, so I know I don't want to take too much more time. However, the current Swansea Master Plan survey was, has been done, and this is some of the interesting results from that current survey, which represents the wishes for the taxpaying residents of the town. So question number six talked about ranking the following reasons you, why you would live in Swansea. And "small-town atmosphere and rural character" got the top overall votes for first, second, and third choice in that survey. Also, rank what you like least about our town and what you would want to see changed. Inadequate housing choices got the lowest overall votes, so did not seem to be a concern that we had inadequate housing. Question number eight, please indicate whether you believe the following issues face our town today. Pedestrian and bicycle safety were a top priority, and as many people have stated already, the safety in this area with that many people, as it is now with the traffic and no sidewalks, and you know that people that live so close to Wilson Pond, they're going to want to come down to the pond to enjoy the pond, and trying to get there, to walk from that development down to the pond, is not safe, I've got to tell you. Question number 10, rank the types of housing you would like to see our town encourage more of. And the single-family homes had the largest response to that question. Lastly, which of the following statements expresses your view on future land use in the town? So the statement that the town should prioritize residential development, this received the least priority, only 2.49%. And so those are just some of the statistics that were gathered by the town for the purpose of updating the master plan. And I know that that's a document that they use for future use of the town. So I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Thank you very much for your, your testimony. In terms of response, Mr. Franks, is there anything you'd like to comment on or to answer to?
Sure. Yes, this is JP Harris. I'll be very brief. We, the master plan is not one of the enumerated, or consideration of the master plan is not one of the enumerated four factors. I understand in other towns, zoning boards like yours actually do have as one of the express criteria, consideration of compliance with the master plan. That's, but that's not the case here. We also understand that the master plan is being updated. I believe you are on a 2003 version, and it's under consideration for updating. And finally, I'll just say that I believe the recent survey information that Ms. Groom relied upon has not yet been adopted by the town. So it's just under consideration as part of the revision to the master plan. So I hope that addresses those aspects. I'll just say, however, that regardless, there are portions of that master plan to which this project is certainly consistent. The notion of providing diversity of housing, meeting regional needs and so forth. Rather than reiterate what we've already said about that, we believe the record shows that, in fact, this project is consistent with the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
Go on to the next person. We have Suzanne Cleary. Suzanne, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, I'm actually here with my father, who has comments. So here he is.
Hello. My name is Mark Fiedler. I live on 17 Sylvan Way in North Swansea.
Can you spell your last name, Mark?
I got two or three questions or comments there. I don't know which one I should answer. Should I spell my name, did you say?
Yes, spell your name, please, your last name.
Just like Arthur Fiedler, F-I-E-D-L-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give your questions and comments.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, this is a horrible way to have a meeting. I just got here, maybe a half hour ago, to my daughter's house. I was writing a whole bunch of reports up and other things. I can't believe you even did this. We need to be face-to-face. We need to be in a room seeing each other. We need to see who's for what and who's not. And this is just a terrible way to do this. I feel awful doing this, but I'm doing it because I feel I have to say something. The lady who just spoke had many, many salient points, and I was very happy to hear her go through that whole area. The comment that it was done in 2003, I think, doesn't even count. The survey was just taken. My daughter took it. So that makes that survey quite valid, in my point of view. If you look around this area, I lived in Edgewood Apartments for 13 years before I bought this house here. I came here from New Jersey. My brother lives in a place called Bud Lake, Bud Lake, very much like this area. And when you went through there, there was one road like there is going down past Wilson Pond. And there were just little places, motels, diners. Well, I was there last spring. My nephew was going through confirmation, and we went to the confirmation program. I had to go early because I was participating in it. My wife came later. We went in two separate cars. Today, there's all these large apartments all over the place. As we went there, my brother and I both were blocked by an accident on the way there. My wife and my sister-in-law were both blocked by accidents on the way there because of the traffic load. If you think that this building isn't going to affect the traffic load in this area, you're kidding yourself. If you, you must have never driven past Wilson Pond. It's practically a dead man's curve by Wilson's Pond, where you have to swing around that corner. With an influx of this number of cars, you've got to be kidding me. If you take a look around the other apartment areas in this area, and I lived in one for 13 years, Edgewood Apartments, it's a beautiful complex. The kids could ride bikes around there. You could take a walk around the place. I drove around the other day just to recognize or remember, make, remember myself to it. And it's a wonderful place to have even had kids or anybody in there. It's set back. There's plenty of room. There's slopes. There's trees. You can even take a walk in the woods from there. The other one that somebody mentioned, Colonial Apartments, I believe it is, they're set back. They're backed by that pond, because I go over there and take wildlife pictures. It's, nobody even knows that's there. The 24 apartments between the coffee shop there, the Dunkin' Donuts, you wouldn't even know they're there. But if you put this giant building there, and now you have all those people, you say 100 to 150 cars, they're going to go right, if you try to drive out at 32 now, you can't turn left and get out. Now, after living here 25 years, I go, always go through that rotary. I never go out the other way unless it's 6 o'clock in the morning. So the, all these studies and all these things you've cited, you know, when I went to college, the first book they gave me was How to Lie with Statistics. And that's exactly what you folks do. This is all about cash. That's all it is. If you build, if you promise us the money, we will come, and then you're going to take off. That's what this is about. Everybody knows it. And in an open meeting, you're going to get the feeling of it. But in this kind of stuff, you're going to have a whole bunch of people probably won't even get on this telephone and call you. It isn't right. You shouldn't make this decision on this tonight. You ought to do this only in an open meeting where people can look you in the eye. And that's what you're running away from with this baloney. That's my plain and simple truth.
Thank you, Mr. Fiedler, for your, your testimony. And in fairness to the meeting, we discussed this at length as a board on whether or not to move forward, and these are times that are unprecedented, and we need to, as a community, be able to communicate these types of activities. And this is the best tools we have in front of us. And beyond that, the government, the governor has cited that this is an acceptable format for a meeting as such. And we're doing our best we can to have everyone be able to respond openly and have a time to discuss. So I just want to make sure I made that point. So I appreciate your comments. And Mr. Franks, do you have any response to anything here you'd like to comment on?
No, other than the fact that we respectfully disagree. Everything that we've done is backed up with data from the state and done by professionals that are in this business. Everything that we presented is done by folks that do this for a living. I mean, I'm sure people can have differences of opinions on it, as they have shared with us this evening. But everything that we do is fact-based and done from professionals that are in this business for the specific reason of sharing this type of data for these types of projects. Thank you.
We have one more up now. Two people with their hands up. Do you want to go on to the next person, Mr. Chair?
I think that makes sense, yes.
All right, we will do that. It is someone on the phone. You are unmuted, 352-4980. Please go ahead.
I'll just say one thing.
I'm sorry, we haven't talked for so long and can't talk. This is Judy Avery calling. I live at 1200 Old Homestead Highway. I've been listening to this for, what, two and a half hours or three hours now? And, and the thing that I'm picking up is, the people that are calling in, I'm not on video because I couldn't get into it. All of them have made such great points. And the only thing I hear from Mr. Frank are all these, just, all these factual things that doesn't mean a beans to these people. We live in this area. He doesn't. And, and I have to disagree with him on the looks of that building. It really is not pretty. I think that might have been part of the words he used. So the only thing I want to say is to the board, please, think of this very long and hard before you force this on us here in Swansea and on the people that live there in North Swansea. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Mr. Franks?
I don't have a response, other than the fact that, you know, the four criteria that is outlaid for the special exception, I think we went through systematically and shared why we need a special exception tonight. And I understand that there are folks with concerns. I understand and get that. But we've worked very, very hard to bring forth an application that's not only clear, it's concise, and we've done the work that we needed to do to get us to this point. And again, we feel we very easily, clearly meet those criteria, and hopefully, the board will see, see that to be the case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have one more person with their, with their hand up, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to go to them, and then we can decide. It'll be about 10:30. We can decide how you want to proceed next. So Barbara Sheehan, you are unmuted. Please go ahead, Barbara. Hello, Barbara. Please go ahead.
I'll make sure we give everyone an opportunity. I don't think we.
Maybe she doesn't know how to unmute herself, perhaps.
She is unmuted.
Oh, she is.
Okay, we'll give another couple of seconds, and then I think, is there anybody beyond who have raised their hand?
No.
No, one more.
All right, we're going to move to the next, next testimony here. Now, we have both Q&amp;A questions as well as responses that Matthew, you were going to present to us on behalf. Best amount of time we have available to us, I'll leave it to you to decide which of the next you'd like to go forward with. I think the Q&amp;A probably makes sense, seeing that people are here, have asked a question that way.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly respond. I know Jeanette Groom provided comments regarding the master plan and had a couple of comments, follow-up comments in the Q&amp;A box that I just wanted to respond to quickly. She made a note that the master plan may be from 2003, but is current. She made a note that the master plan may be from 2003, but is current, is the current document unless the guidelines are to be followed. And that, that is accurate. The 2003 master plan is still our current master plan. We are, as the board knows, we are in the process of updating that plan, working with the planning board. But we haven't completed that update to the master plan as of yet. So the 2003 plan is still current. And just to follow up with the master plan topic, I'm going to read aloud comments provided by Nancy Carlson of 240 Cobble Hill Road regarding Swansea Housing. So this was sent to me by email and I'll read it aloud here. Low moderate income Winchester Wood at 10 West Swansea Road, Evergreen Knoll at 851 West Swansea Road, Riverbend Apartments at 837 West Swansea Road and Swansea Township on Main Street in West Swansea. Note, there are two other multifamily units on Main Street in West Swansea. For senior housing, the Ashville River Apartments at 57 Holdbrook Avenue, Waterview, which is a HUD project at 64 Lake Street, Page Homestead at 183 Mandatnock Hideaway, multifamily apartments Haley Park, now Princeton Properties, 742 West Swansea Road, Edgewood Apartments, 27 Old Homestead Highway and Homestead Apartments, Holdbrook Avenue. She also notes the recent approval for 32 new apartments on Old Homestead Highway. According to Affordable Housing Statistics, Swansea provides 260 affordable apartments, 3.6%. And Keane provides 391 affordable apartments, 1.7%. Swansea is already doing its, quote, fair share. A recent survey of residents of Swansea to update the master plan indicates that the small town atmosphere and the rural character of the town are of prime importance to residents. Keeping farms and agriculture are also highly valued. A vast majority also prefer single-family homes, not apartment buildings. And that's the conclusion of the comments provided by Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Franks, would you like to respond to that? I think in terms of
No, I don't really have anything else to add to that. I mean, I would refer everybody back to the Southwest Regional Planning Commission that deals with these types of, these types of projects and have everybody take, you know, a look at that because there's a lot of really good data in there that would support the need for affordable housing in the area. I think, again, back to 1%, less than a 1% vacancy rate. There's a, there's an overwhelming need for affordable housing and senior housing is at the top of the list. Thank you.
Thank you for your response, Mr. Franks. At the time, we're at 10:31. I think we've done a diligent job of trying to get everybody's ability to ask questions and to give testimony and so forth. Given the circumstances and the tools we have set forth, there are limitations. We're trying the best we can to be responsive both to the applicant as well as the public at large. And we're doing the best to make that happen. But being at 10:30, you know, in terms of being able to deliberate amongst the board and then to make a decision. And with any additional comments from the public, I can't see a way of that going forward at this time. So I would entertain. Yes, Matthew?
Sorry to interject. I know that Mary Werner, who is in a butter to this property, was on the call earlier and had her hand raised. I know that she has had issues with Zoom. I do have a letter from her. And if, if the board is okay with that, I know we're past our 10:30 deadline, but I would like to read that letter from her, just as in the butter.
Okay, we can come this far. Everybody else?
I'm going to go with that.
I'm fading fast.
Okay, okay. Okay, very, okay. Okay, this is from Mary Werner, who was a resident at Two Houghton Point. She says, "Good morning, Matthew. I hope to be able to join tonight's board meeting using Zoom. Should technical difficulties prevent me from communicating my thoughts, I would like you to speak on my behalf. My hope is that we postpone this meeting until such a time as we as a community can meet in person to hear and discuss the project being proposed to be built at 115 Old Homestead Highway. Should the hearing with Avon Rouge Development Group be heard this evening, I hope that all residents and taxpayers of Swansea will be allowed the opportunity to be heard. My name is Mary Werner, Two Houghton Point, a butter to property proposed to be built at 115 Old Homestead Highway. My husband, John Werner III, and I retired from Swansea four years ago. We rented this house for a year before we purchased it. We love the town and its rural atmosphere. At the time, we were aware that the 115 Old Homestead Highway property was for sale. We did our due diligence and inquired at the town hall what the property had been approved for. We were aware that the property was in the business district. We were told it had, had been approved for a 16-unit dwelling. We thought this over and agreed we could live with the structure of that size without a problem. Now we are being asked to allow a 76-unit, four-story apartment complex with, in my opinion, institutional-style architecture, be built on a lot of this size with no green space and a minimum of 76 more cars added to our roads. I, as in a butter, am concerned that the exit from this property will be having a direct impact on the side of my house, headlights, accidents, increased foot traffic on a very dangerous road. In reference to to-be conditions for special exception, will such approval reduce the value of any property within the district or otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? The sheer size of the property will change the nature of the neighborhood. It will be a large, unattractive structure. The lack of green space around the four-story building and the square footage of more than 150 parking spaces will make the units unattractive and by their proximity to existing dwellings, reduce the attractiveness and value of said existing dwellings. On a personal note, I feel the town already has enough available housing and we do not desire a building of this size. I believe the impact of a building of this size will require more taxpayers' monies, schools, municipal services, et cetera. And as property owners, residents, and taxpayers, we, parentheses, my husband and I emphatically oppose this being built. Thank you, Mary Werner.
Thank you very much, Matthew. I will not presume to speak for you, Mr. Franks here, but I think you responded to a lot of the questions that were brought up in this particular testimony. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, not at this time. I'd just like to thank the board and everyone that attended tonight's meeting for the opportunity to speak. You know, we've worked really hard on this project. We feel that it's a great fit for the community and have tried to demonstrate that with information and data and materials that we have submitted to the ZBA that would support the special exception request for a senior housing complex. This is senior housing, 62 and over. These are valuable assets in our community. These are our parents, our friends. I'm a human being too. I have mom and dad that are 76 and they're at home in a, in a home that they, you know, really can't manage anymore and they would love to downsize. In the Lakes region, there's nothing for them in the Lakes region for them to find a senior housing facility there either. I see this every day. I understand change is tough for some folks. I get that. But we, again, feel like we have met the criteria for a special exception. And we know from the data that we have researched and received and presented that the, again, the need is overwhelming for affordable housing, senior housing. And it's going to serve the community well. So I thank the board for the extended time, for the opportunity to speak here. And I appreciate everybody's questions, comments, and concerns. And I, thanks again.
Okay, so this is Brian Rogers. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue this meeting to the next scheduled meeting. We pick it up at that point. However, I do request a couple of things. One is that everything that's on the Q and A that has not been addressed be saved and addressed at that meeting. And that we continue that same forum, provided that's what the governor has stated for then. And that you also explain ex parte communication since this is a continued open case. That's my motion.
I second that.
Okay, just a quick, quick response. Is that something procedurally we can do with respect to saving all this information, the question and answer? Do you see, foresee a problem, Matthew or Beverly?
I don't know how you do that. Can, can you, can someone print out the Q and A list?
I, I believe I can, I believe I can copy everything that's up here and, and save it in a Word document.
Yeah, you can copy and paste it.
Okay. All right, well, the motion is to continue the case to the next board meeting and picking up where we are, where we left off, with the caveat that the Q and A questions that have not been answered and have the ability to be discussed, be brought up at that meeting. Seconded, I would entertain a vote.
Quick question. Do you know what the date and time certain is for the next meeting?
Well, it would be, I think it would be May 18th. It was, May 18th is the third Monday in May.
It would be May 18th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just raise a port of order from the applicant's perspective, we'd like to have a special meeting so we could wrap this up sooner than May 18.
In terms of that, Matthew, procedurally.
Requirements.
The motion's been made by a board member. It's been seconded, voted on this, discussed it. In terms of having a special meeting put in play between now and that proposed date?
So this is Brian. It's my motion. I will amend my motion if we're allowed to do special meeting within the posting, public posting guidelines. Matthew?
Yes, depending on what date we choose, as long as we provide ourselves enough time, we could do a special meeting between now and May 18.
I would second that for a special meeting two weeks from tonight. I don't have a calendar in front of me. But
For this motion to move forward, we'd have to have a specific date in mind?
Okay, so my motion is now hereby amended to May 4th. Continue this meeting to May 4th, 7:00 PM to be continued on Zoom.
Second.
Does that give you enough time for public posting, Matthew? That's 14 days.
That would give me enough time.
Okay, so I amend my motion. It's been seconded. Just remember that I also asked you to do the ex parte communication on this, please. Instructions.
And just quickly, Mike Courtney, do you see any issue with that?
May 4th?
Yeah.
No, you don't even have to do a public posting if you're continuing it now to a date certain. But if we have this issue of, I think, May 4th will, is still in the emergency, you know, governor's order. I think, I think you have to do a public posting. You just continue it now to May 4th at 7:00 PM. So the public knows and we'll, we'll do that. Yeah, no problem there.
Posting would need to be the Zoom ID, which we probably don't have. It won't be exact.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to postpone this meeting or to continue this meeting on May 4th at 7:00 PM with a caveat that all of the information and questions that were not asked be able to be asked at that subsequent meeting. It has been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would just observe that this is pretty unusual. We rarely have special meetings between our regularly scheduled zoning board meetings. And I guess what is the basis for a request of special treatment?
This meeting has gone on for a long time and it's been continued. And I think, in all fairness to the board and the town and everyone involved, we need to try to make an effort to keep this moving because we got a lot of things that seem to be needing questions that I'm, you know, hoping, and I'm just going to add this, that the concerns that have been raised and I, that, you know, both the applicant will, in good faith, take a look at those and see if there's any way they can address them. And, and again, they'll try to get some more of those questions, you know, answered from the taxpayers because I know they've been waiting patiently to ask these for many weeks, if not months.
And Bob, that's a really good question. And my vantage point, the only reason I was willing to amend the motion to a special meeting is just because of the taxpayers. Here we are, quarter to 11 at night, and we still have 52 people on the phone. So there's a lot of interest. This cam's been kicked down the street long enough, and I think that we owe it to them just to not kick it to May and not finish it then and kick it to, you understand what I'm saying? Over.
I would, I would tend to agree with that point and the fact that in keeping things fresh in people's minds as well. And this is an unprecedented situation to begin with, the fact that we're doing this meeting in this format. So I don't think we have necessarily precedent to, to follow.
Just a point of clarification. I have Jonah Gosnell of Apex Racing, who had a special exception application on the agenda for this evening and has asked whether his application would be considered at that special meeting on May 4th? Or is the board just considering the application from Avon Rouge Development on May 4th?
My vantage point, given any other direction, would be just to continue this case and hear this out to fruition and completion and then to push Jonah Gosnell's case that hasn't even been opened yet or considered to the next posted meeting, which would be maybe 18th at 7:00 PM. Any discussion on that?
Thanks, seeing that we spent three hours, almost four, on this one in particular. I think we are going to spend more time. So I agree with you.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We've discussed. Anyone have anything further to add? Okay, Beverly, would you mind calling the roll on that?
I will. Ann Karasinski?
Ann Karasinski says yes.
Brian Rutgers? Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion passes. Five yeses.
All right, everyone, I appreciate everybody's, you know, patience and, and working as late as we have on this. So everyone did a fantastic job with a very tough task in front of us. Just, thank you.
Oh, Adam, ex parte. Need to explain that this is an open case and it cannot be discussed.
Oh, and in terms of this, this is an open case. It cannot be discussed with any of the board members. No board members can speak to each other about this and nobody in the public can speak to any of the board members in terms of this until the, the next scheduled meeting. We're a judicial branch, a semi-judicial branch, and we don't want to be considered influenced in our decision-making. So this is, this will be continued then and only discussed with any of the members of the board then.
Thank you.
Anything to add to that, Attorney Courtney?
Oh, well said.
I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Matthew, do they need to actively do anything with that other case or is it just continued automatically since they didn't open it?
I would say I would just make a motion to continue that to your meeting on May 18th.
How can we continue a case that hasn't been opened yet? And you may be right. I'm just asking.
Because it was published as a public meeting.
Yeah, the public hearing notice was sent out for this evening.
That's fair enough. So I make a motion that we push Jonah Gosnell's case to the next scheduled meeting at May 18th, 7:00 PM. Time, location, and venue to be determined between now and then. In all fairness to Jonah, we'd like to hear his case in full.
Second. Eric Calio seconded.
Motion's been made, a second. Any discussion? Motion's been made, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. We shall vote on it.
Okay, hold on a sec. Ann?
Uh, yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There was a motion on the table to adjourn for the night. Was it seconded by anybody?
No, it wasn't. Not yet.
No, we're second there.
What was there?
Yeah, motion Mitchell never made a motion tonight. What's up with that, except for the beginning?
Okay, we'll do it.
Motion to.
We'll call again to adjourn. Ann Karasinski?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
You are adjourned.
Everyone have a wonderful night and thank you again for, for everything.
Good job as your first chair.
Job, yeah. We can't go on a meeting like this, though.
You know, we can't. I'm too old.
All right, everyone, take care. Have a great night.
Take care.
Of all of the comments, so I don't know if you copied and pasted as well, but I took pictures of all the comments and I can email them to you if needed. I just wanted to say we closed it and lost everything, but.
This recording?
Yes, it is recording. I have to stop it when you're, I, I will stop it now if you, you want me to.
I'm just, I was curious as to who is going to have it and where that was going to. I think we discussed that.
Well, it's on, it's, it's going to reside on my laptop, but I will copy it to the, the town's, to my folder on the town servers. So it won't be residing on the laptop. And that, that way, Matt, Matthew can get at it. Well, actually, well, I'll put it in, in yours, in your folder, Michael. In the administrative folder.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
One, Michael, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you guys, too. Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Matthew, you ready for me to close the meeting?